That's not a, not a workday unless you have some technical difficulties. Right, well, today is Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, in our regular council meeting. Call into order, and just a notice to the public, city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present, via Teams.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I would. Please stand if you are able, and today I'm thinking of Pearl Harbor, so.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember. And Vice Mayor, our mission statement, please.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shimoney, our land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. It'd be my honor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
All right, thank you. And we do have a few here for general public participation. I will start with Sarah Dikter.
Whoa. Sweet. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I am here to show you the award that the City of Flagstaff received in September for Best Public Outreach in the State of Arizona from the Arizona Chapter of the American Planning Association. And so with this award, I just want to show the short, two-minute video that was shown at the awards ceremony, which was held virtually.
The Southside Community Specific Plan was a collaborative grassroots effort that used community-driven approaches to embrace the distinct history, character, and sense of place of Flagstaff, Arizona's Southside neighborhood. The plan, led by the City of Flagstaff and the Southside Community Association, focused on supporting urban growth and creating a shared vision for the area. The project team also included Matrix Design Group, Friends of the Rio de Flag, South Northern Arizona University, and the residents and business owners of the Southside neighborhood. The community had experienced significant discrimination and hardship during the 20th century, leaving residents skeptical of the city's intentions and the planning process. The plan approach was tailored to alleviate these concerns, mend relationships, and foster a partnership that supported hopeful ideas. The planning team ensured engagement efforts were not focused on city-defined solutions and encouraged residents to share the history of Southside and develop visions for the future. Outreach efforts were led by both the planning team and community residents and included walking tours, on-street meetings, and interactive exercises and surveys, effectively engaging the entire neighborhood. The commitment to simply listening, not guiding or dictating, was essential to planning an equitable built environment for the Southside, and the plan was unanimously adopted on September 1st, 2020. The foundation of the project's success was the community-driven planning process that ensured the neighborhood's diverse interests and needs were identified and addressed. Flexibility, responsiveness, and the creation of space for all voices to be heard allowed for open and honest communication and led to positive relationships among residents, the city, and the university. Southside residents are now mentoring other Flagstaff neighborhoods in grassroots planning methods as they look to the future.
We would like to thank the American Planning Association Arizona Chapter for this honor, and you'll be seeing this award in some public space in City Hall soon. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah. All right, Mr. Neil Chapman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you. I just would like to share a brief update on our wildland fire management program. Collaborative forest management efforts that involve agencies, communities, and stakeholders are the only way we can reduce undesirable wildfire impacts at scale. No one-person agency or organization can do this alone. The Flagstaff Fire Department and Summit Fire and Medical District recently led a new collaborative effort this fall by hosting a prescribed fire training exchange. Prescribed fire training exchanges, also known as TRECs, are planned two-to-three-week events that support local capacity building for fire management and offer professional fire practitioners a more holistic perspective of how best to create fire-adapted communities. The Flagstaff Training Exchange strategy is unique. We are intentionally bringing career-structured firefighters and wildland firefighters together to work on prescribed fire treatments, training, and outreach in the wildland urban interface. During the Flagstaff TRECs, training opportunities were provided for prescribed fire burn boss, engine boss, firing boss, squad boss, fire effects monitor, fire observer, and safety officer positions. Classroom sessions with local subject matter experts with NAU and the Ecological Restoration Institute covered northern Arizona fire ecology and wildfire management effectiveness. Field sessions included structure protection planning and fuels treatment lessons learned from the 2014 slide fire, and indigenous burning practices and cultural resource protection with fire archaeologist Jason Nez at the Grand Canyon. The Flagstaff TRECs accomplished 881 acres of prescribed fire on city and federal lands. That was 328 acres at Observatory Mesa Natural Area and 553 acres on the Flagstaff Ranger District. A 93-acre unit at the county's Rogers Lake Natural Area was prepped, but we did not get to burn that one. TRECs participating organizations included Highlands Fire District, Golden Ranch Fire District in southern Arizona, Salt River Fire Department in central Arizona, Rapid City Fire Department in South Dakota, Grand Lake Fire Protection District, and the Red, White, and Blue Fire District in Colorado, the Nevada Division of Forestry, Coconino National Forest, National Park Service, Grand Canyon, and Flagstaff Area Monuments, and the Nature Conservancy. We're already working on plans for a fall 2022 training exchange and look forward to increasing community engagement with our local prescribed fire events. As you've probably heard, there is good news regarding For Forest Restoration Initiative investments in the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project. I'm working closely with the Flagstaff Ranger District to develop implementation plans, and we'll be providing an update to council in early next year. Thank you very much.
That's awesome. Thank you, Neil. Mr. Dan Seimer, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Dan Seimer, zoning code manager for the city. I'm here today to let you know that the Board of Adjustment is one of your many boards and commissions, although it's one of the mandatory boards that is sat by the council in accordance with state statute. This board listens to variances and appeal decisions of the planning director and zoning administrator, which I'm doing this here, but for that purposes, we have currently three open seats in that position, and we have no volunteers. Over the next few months, the remaining members, except one, will be terming out. So we do need quite a few people to, at least six, we need a minimum of four for a quorum, which we have right now, but those terms will be terming out. So we're looking for volunteers, and if you have anyone who has suggested or you would like to volunteer, that'd be great. They meet as needed, so typically two to three times a year. They also, as long as I'm part of the, doing the code administration and the amendments, I also have them look at our zoning code texts as we bring them forward to you for any comments and issues that they see. That's just a programmatical thing, it's not a requirement, it's just more courtesy to them. So I'd just like to let you know that we have some vacancies, and if you have anyone that you would like to suggest, please brief, please let them know to volunteer, and they can get the Stacys to fill that paperwork out. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Dan. And David McCain.
Mayor Deasy, Vice Mayor Daggett, and Council. This poem is entitled "Thank You, City Council," written and delivered by David R. McCain, 515 West Cherry Avenue, apartment B. I am a member of a commission, speaking as a private citizen today. Thank you, City Council, for voting no on Section 17 last month. I hope you remember, it was 5-2. What could have been a nightmare y'all turned into a dream. All the critters of the forest, animals and plants, seem happier today. A happy tree is something to see, knowing that in your wisdom, you affirmed their right to stay for at least a little while longer. We think nature has no franchise, no vote, no voice. It's not something we discuss. We're so blinded by our narcissism, me, 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 that we forget nature is really us. Imagine that for a second. Our grandest plans and machinations compel us to slice off our legs and arms. Ouch, it hurts. When we ruin rivers, hills, and atmospheres and are struck deaf and dumb by the alarms. 416.15 parts per million as of December 5th, 2021. This means nothing to us. When you vote to save a forest, like you did last month, thanks again, you're speaking for the trees. You're honoring what's sacred, all of life, and putting many of us at ease. So, thank you for your action, saving brother soil and sister tree. It's one small step in the long journey toward a time when all of nature dwells in harmony. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And then I have Sarah Langley.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. Wanted to take a minute to introduce to you our new community engagement specialist, Samantha Victor. Samantha's work program will focus on three primary areas, so our videography efforts, the city's social media channels, and then our website. So we're super excited to have her on board and help us expand our community engagement efforts. I'll let Samantha say a few words to introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. It's so nice to meet you all. Just to give a little bit of background on myself, I have been living in Flagstaff for over five years now. I graduated from NAU last year with a bachelor's degree in visual communication and photography, and I'm just so grateful to have this opportunity to work with you all, and I really look forward to working with you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, and we'll be sure to keep you updated on Samantha's work. Thanks.
Oh, thanks, Sarah. All right, was that the, do we have any online public participants? One? All right, I'll queue them up.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It's good to see you again. Concerning the museum fire area, the county assessor's office informed me that there is a property on Dortha belonging to the City of Flagstaff with direct access to the drainage that should be used as flood mitigation. I am assuming that no one is aware of this because it is not being utilized as it should. Instead, the city and county are using Main Street for flood mitigation as well as access to Dortha. Dortha should be assessed from Row Street as the city-owned property has a direct access to the drainage. It is urgent that this be investigated because when the utility pole is replaced, it must also be relocated to use the city-owned property to the fullest. As Andy mentioned, the city is not equipped for this, so mistakes will be made and people are frustrated. This means time must be spent on productive communication. I am nowhere near an effective communicator, so I will try to focus on less points more often. I want to speak to the communication liaison position that is being considered and hope they will be better able to address the following points. In the last mailing sent out by the Flood Control District, the language is unproductive and disheartening. There needs to be consistent messaging because currently every person asked a question gives a different answer. Residents have questions that need to be communicated. Communication involves a conversation. As an example, at the last meeting I was at, I mentioned that my assessment was not accurate. The response was that the answer to my question was on the website, and I could request a copy of my assessment. That response was not the answer to my question. That answer was because I am not easy to understand, and I was not given a chance to explain myself better. The liaison would be for all departments to work with residents, not organizations. Currently, all my questions have been met with a response from the Museum Flood Coalition within 24 hours, but I would prefer that the responses be from my government. Number five, the liaison needs to schedule meet and greets ahead of time and on a monthly basis, because I have only heard of these meetings after the fact and have never been able to attend one. We know that someone is listening to these recommendations because we have received more information, the county website has been updated, and the council is very encouraging, and for this we are very grateful. There is a long way to go, and the goal should be to always improve and be a model for other cities. There is a social flood coming, and this will help prepare Flagstaff, so maybe that damage can be limited as well. I saw your agenda today, and you guys have a lot of work to do, so thank you very much for taking the time to listen to all these public comments, and I appreciated the poem, and it's just really nice to hear different people speak. I look forward to this privilege that you've given us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And we do have one more? Okay.
Mayor and Council, that was Don Rodriguez. I now have Paul Beir. Paul, you may go ahead. Mr. Beir, were you able to hear us? Mr. Beir, you are muted if you are trying to speak.
It is not clear how to unmute.
We can hear you now.
Terrific. Please go ahead.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, I'm Paul Beir, 140 East Paseo Del Rio in Flagstaff. Today, I'm urging the city council to rethink the Lone Tree Road Railroad overpass project, which does need to go through, but we need to rethink it so it can reduce carbon emissions, promote biking and walking, and increase public safety. Specifically, I urge you to immediately instruct the design team to develop an alternative that contains one motor vehicle lane in each direction instead of the two lanes each way in the current preliminary design. The current design is going to promote the use of motor vehicles in Flagstaff, which contradicts the Flagstaff Carbon Neutral Plan, which calls for, quote, "a big shift away from motor vehicles." It's also not consistent with our Active Transportation Management Plan, which is nearing completion. I sent each of you a letter this week with some specific ideas to consider, way too much to consider, to repeat right now. It includes some windbreaks and partial overhead cover on the pedestrian and bike lanes, ideas for snow removal that will not leave any snow in the pedestrian and bike lanes, replacing the jersey barriers between the motor and non-motorized lanes with upgrade walls that minimize splash of traffic noise and water. I also remind you that the Lone Tree project that we approved in the 2018 bond election included not only the railroad overpass but also redesigning Lone Tree Road for the two miles all the way down to I-40. And now we need to think about designing the overpass in a way that will help design that Lone Tree Road that will promote safety and non-motorized travel. My letter has several suggestions on that, including keeping Lone Tree Road as a one-lane, one-motor lane each direction all the way to I-40, making each of those six intersections on that two miles as roundabouts. Roundabouts almost eliminate fatal accidents, substantially reduce vehicle emissions, avoid the cost and electric consumption of traffic lights, and are friendlier to walkers and bikers. They also make people in adjoining neighborhoods like Brandon Homes neighborhood where I live feel that we are not just the carpet for an arterial used by through traffic. To see this for yourself, I urge each of you to drive State Route 179 from downtown Sedona to Lakapaki Square for the 6.7 miles to the village of Oak Creek. 10,000 Phoenician tourists drive that road almost every day. It's one lane each direction, 6.7 miles, no traffic lights. Bike lanes, it's beautiful, friendly for bikers and walkers. We need to start thinking about how we're going to make this project work that way. And if you don't immediately ask engineers to draft an alternative with one lane in each direction, you will have slammed the door shut on such innovation, so I urge you to please, please do it. We do need this overpass, but we need to think about how we're going to do it best. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And that is our last public participant? All right.
Actually, Mayor, could I ask one, can I add one more?
Yes, sure.
For myself, please. I'd like to...
You just need to make sure you fill out a card in the back.
So I'd just like to take a quick minute to introduce Annie Tisi. She is joining the city clerk's office as our city clerk specialist. She is going to be providing high-level administrative support to the city clerk's office and with some assistance to the city manager's office as well. We're super excited to have her on board, and do you want to say anything?
I just quickly want to say it was a pleasure to meet all of you, and thank you to the wonderful team that I have in the city manager's office and just allowing me, welcoming me into the office, and I'm just very thankful to be here.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, with that, we are down to agenda item number 5A, our city manager report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a few tidbits here. It will be a short narrative on my part, but I will invite others to give you an overview on the monthly reports that are appended to my report, specifically that of sustainability, water services, and economic vitality. With respect to my report, I make note of a few things. We are very pleased to have Amy Hagan step in as our interim recreation manager in addition to her current role as parks manager. Thank you, Amy. There's another update regarding a staff position. I'm going to invite Dan Folk with Community Development to share with us his news there. Dan, are you with us?
I am, Greg. Thank you. So, yeah, we're excited to announce we were able to fill our dark sky specialist position. This is the shared position that's jointly between city and Coconino County. And so we're pleased to announce that Janice Hakala has accepted the position. Janice is not new to Team Flagstaff. She's been working in water services, I believe, since 2018. She's a graduate of NAU with a degree in environmental sciences, and so we really are excited to welcome Janice to Community Development. We all know how important this position is to maintaining our dark skies and educating the community about this really wonderful program. So thank you, and if you run into Janice, please welcome her to her new position.
Thank you so much, Dan, and thank you, Janice. Congratulations to you. The report also has a few updates. In a minute, I'm also going to invite Mr. Rick Tatter to talk about some of these updates, which are pretty exciting. But there's some nice updates courtesy of our fire department, our police department. I would like to single out and give big props to Officer Dustin Everhart, who, while patrolling one of our neighborhoods, was able to exercise some lifesaving efforts. Officer Everhart, we are grateful for your heroism. Thank you. Updates from our pros division and some updates from public works. With respect to management services, I do not want to steal the thunder. I would invite Rick Tatter to share some very good news with you. Rick, you with us?
I am here. Thank you, Greg. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I am Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. As Greg has mentioned, there's a couple of worthy notes to provide to City Council that was put in the city manager report for this week. We'll start with our annual certificate of achievement for our financial reporting. Our award from the Government Finance Officers Association is one of the highest attainments of accomplishments that our reports can achieve. We have a very professional team that has been very consistent at receiving these awards. In fact, this is our 27th consecutive year that we've received this award, and this one is related to the June 30th, 2020 financial report. There is a lot of rigor put into this with changing requirements that our team and our staff keep up with and continue to provide a report that meets the guidelines that are required. Congratulations to the management services team, and especially the finance team who is responsible for putting the documents together and completing the annual audit. So congratulations to them on that. Then there's a second award in the city manager report this week, and this goes to our procurement team. They have received the prestigious award for excellence in procurement. This is for the 2021 year, and this marks our 11th consecutive year that we've received this award. There is a lot of criteria that they also need to meet to apply and gain this recognition, and our team has been very successful in providing this. There was only 181 successful organizations that received this award in 2021, and I'm proud to recognize our purchasing team for this amazing achievement. So those are the two awards that have been presented this week.
Thank you, Rick. Please pass on our congratulations to the many people involved in those awards. It's really amazing. Lastly, in my report, there's, just for your information, reference to a support letter going to NAU. This regards some programming, and there's a lot of information technology speak in that letter, so good luck trying to decipher it. I had a hard time myself, but it's there for your reading pleasure. I would like to invite Nicole Antonopoulos with Sustainability to give you an update, or at least overview, of the monthly report. This goes for October, by the way. We're always about a month behind on these reports. But Nicole, if you're with us, if you can give an overview on the monthly report, that would be great.
Oh, I'd be honored to, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director, and yes, just providing a high-level overview of some of our accomplishments in the sustainability section from October. I'm really pleased to say that we were able to assist community development, and in particular, Martin and with hosting five open houses regarding the Active Transportation Master Plan, and I'm really pleased with the outcome of the surveys that came in and the amount of community engagement that we had on that very important topic. In our climate action program, as you'll be discussing later this afternoon, sustainability staff did meet all the requirements for the Carbon Neutrality Regional Plan Amendment, which included multiple open houses and a public comment review period. In our community stewards program, we teamed up this year for Make a Difference Day with Coconino County and internally with Water Services, Open Space, oh, excuse me, and the United Way, I can't leave them out, to host the event. And what we did was focused on two homes that had a significant amount of debris left over from the floods, and 31 community members volunteered to make a quick work of cleaning up the debris from these two locations. We also hosted our annual 15-minute makeover, so a big shout-out to our internal partners, again, Water Services and folks at the Aquaplex, the Flagstaff Housing Authority, Hal Jensen, and a lot of City of Flagstaff residents who stepped outside for 15 minutes on October 15th to help us clean up litter around the community. And I did just want to thank all of our litter cleanup volunteers. We had a number of volunteers in the month of October, excuse me, 185 exactly, who contributed over 250 hours to helping keep Flagstaff clean. And in our energy program, I did just want to keep the council updated, our energy rebate program is wildly popular. At the end of October, we are already at 56% of funds that were distributed for that program. And we also worked very hard with APS and to keep our electric vehicle charging stations moving forward, and the Flagstaff Airport charging stations, we're excited to say that work began in November on that. With food systems programming, as you heard a lot about... With Food Systems Programming, as you heard a lot about last week, we did start our self-service drop-off stations, both at Flagstaff CSA and to Hal Jensen. So a big shout out to our partners. We also hosted a worm composting workshop. And what we're seeing here, Council, is just a real desire by the community to stay engaged. So you're hearing a lot of our regular programming coming back online. So we did partner with Wellow Bend back in October to host a composting workshop. And then we also hosted, I'm sorry, a vermiculture workshop. Then we also hosted three composting hub work sessions to help educate community members about our self-service location. And then just a couple final highlights in our Materials Management Program. We did host our annual drop-off days, and we had more than 260 residents participate coming through to drop off hazardous waste, ensuring that it is processed in a manner that is appropriate. And I thank you for this opportunity and look forward to presenting another update soon.
Thank you, Nicole. In just a second, we'll ask Andy with Water Services to give you an update, and then we'll finish with Heidi Hansen with Economic Vitality. We take note that in the last Manager's Report, we had the capital improvements update, the capital projects. I did not have a lot of time in that meeting for, to allow for some background narrative on that, but when we have the next capital projects report, we'll have that team in front of you as well. Andy Bertelson, are you with us? And can you speak to Water Services briefly? Thank you.
I am. I will speak. I'll spare you the camera, so, but we have the Water Services Monthly Report from October. Just a few highlights from this report. Some of the information seems like light years ago, but the step plan has been completed to replace the skill-based pay. We want to thank the City Manager and Human Resources Staff for committing to the skills necessary to operate our water, wastewater, reclaimed water, and stormwater systems. For that, we were excited on the citizen survey, as it did rank Water Services favorably. We continue to talk about our infrastructure needs. We're involved in the bond discussions for our wastewater treatment plant needs, which are many, and funding is significant. Was able to do some radio interviews with CAF News, just to talk about our Water Services Division going forward. Recruitment, and Greg had asked me about this yesterday. Gary Miller, who has, you've seen in front of you as a council from our engineering group, is now with Water Services, but he has not left the city. And it's really a good opportunity for Gary and the city to continue to build bridges between our groups, Community Development, Public Works, Engineering Services, and Water Services. And just met with Gary before this meeting on some organizational ideas that we can, that we would like to move forward and will continue to move forward, and just building bridges, literally and figuratively. We continue to recruit for jobs at the technical level, lab supervisors, and then wastewater collection technicians, as well as our SCADA system. If you remember from Tim Harrington and that team's award, silly computers always demanding attention, and so we need to continue to give attention to that group. Congratulations to Lisa Deam on the Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Award. Lisa is so valuable to our team, both in budget and communications for Water Services. And then to learn about all the activities that we do outside of our everyday workaday life and working with the archaeological services in the community. It's just really great to see the well-rounded employees that we have. Regulatory compliance, we continue to monitor SCADA information systems, just making sure our systems are talking to one another. And that's kind of a vision that we have for the future as we face many retirements in the organization. How are we replacing those folks with so much knowledge of our systems? And then how do we also take the opportunity to build our systems so we can monitor, just like we're having this meeting now, many of us are remote, but we're still present? And so how do we build our systems to be able to do that from a monitoring side in our systems? Collections, we have, and thank you to the Budget Team and others for the electric mini dozer. We got a lighting system installed and cameras installed, and we're putting that to good use. So our first electric piece of equipment is in stormwater in collections, and we're using it to its fullest extent, and we're very excited about that. We continue with our meter replacement program, our conservation efforts. We're conducting many classroom presentations, about 120 students in October. And then the, our inroads with Public Works Facilities has agreed to install 11 efficiency toilets at various city buildings. So just continue to make inroads inside the organization and in our community. So let me know if you have any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy, for your time. And Heidi Hansen, can you touch on your monthly report if you're available? Thanks.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I wanted to get on camera to say hello, but I'm going to turn it off for bandwidth while I speak to you. I wanted to share with you that at the airport, we had a record month, 14,303 total implements. This beat 2019 and 2020 numbers. We're very excited about it. It looks like November numbers were very good, over 10,000 as well. We have ongoing airport marketing, and if you've been at the Northern Arizona University Dome, Sky Dome, you will see that inside we have a terrific fly Flagstaff installation. It is a static installation, meaning it stays put. And it talks about our three routes, as well as why we want people to visit, discover, and grow in Flagstaff. We also have finished the paving in October for the new parking lot. Thank you, Adam Mialy, for leading this project for us. They're now putting in curbs and gutters. And then tonight, of course, you're going to be hearing about the first read of the paid parking rates. As far as Park Flag is concerned, we are delighted that Stephanie Vaughn had accepted the Lead Worker position. And she has actually done this position as an interim for 18 months, finally got the position permanently. And we're just happy, as all get out, to have Stephanie in this role permanently. We are actually hiring parking aides, so if you know of anyone, we would appreciate you getting the word out. In beautification, we are doing so many projects. We have the airport parking lot, as I told you. Well, we're doing a decorative fence project that you'll be seeing more. Jenna Weldon will be coming before you soon to talk to you about that. We also have a discussion on the Downtown Connection Center. We're working on downtown tree wells. We're looking at historic Southside Community Garden. And we are going to be doing a main library entrance art project, as well as enhancing ADA this spring. In Economic Development, we celebrated Manufacturers Month. This is a big deal to us. These businesses are a huge sector, and they're what makes this place a great place to grow. Library team never disappoints. They had the Pals Mobile out for the first time since COVID, doing outreach at school events. And they also did several Halloween projects in October, youth craft kits and much more. So I liked one in particular where they actually caught it locked in the library, where some of the parents and youth played in the library from about 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. Liz, they listened to scary stories, they ghost-hunted with iPads, and they went on a tour. I mean, can you talk about creativity? This team has it. We also had our Economic Vitality Division Annual Meeting. Greg touched on that the last time he did his report, and it was very successful with over 80 people in person and then more even online. And just so that you all know, tourism is doing well. We are actually rebounding, but we're not yet where we need to be with occupancy. We're a little bit below where we want to be from our numbers, but we are actually gaining everything else in rate. Average daily rate was almost up 30%, and so was revenue per available room. These are huge metrics to our hoteliers. We had a lot of people looking at our leafometer. If you don't know what the leafometer is, it's where we have people track how the leaves are changing through the season so they know the best times to come up and the places that they can go and they can leaf peel. And pretty soon, you're going to see something about a snowometer. And so Trace Ward and his team are actively working on that. So these are just some of the great things that happened in October, much more happening in November, and you'll be seeing that report soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Much appreciated. Mayor, Council, unless you have any questions, that concludes my report. Thank you to all who participated. A friendly reminder, we have an all-day retreat on Thursday. We will feed you and take care of you. Please come with open minds, and we'll be talking budget. So I'm looking forward to it. It will be facilitated. We've had a couple of dry runs, so we'll be ready for you. Any questions?
Any questions, Council? I'm not seeing any.
Thank you.
So thank you, City Manager and the whole team for the update. We're down to Agenda Item Number 6A. This is our COVID-19 update.
Good morning, or excuse me, I guess it's good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Shannon Anderson. If you will give me just one moment, I will pull up the presentation. Shannon, did we lose you?
Oh, there you are. Ta-da. There we go.
I think it should, is it coming across okay?
Yeah, we can see it now.
Okay, great. And the good news is, is you can see the slides and not my dog. All right, so we have our COVID-19 update for today's council meeting, and we will continue to share with you the data from Coconino County Health and Human Services, Northern Arizona Healthcare, Navajo Nation, as well as our Hopi Tribe. And then we will also provide an Indigenous Nations update. Looking at our COVID-19 weekly cases, we did see one week uptick after our last report on November 6. And then the last two weeks, November 13 and November 20 ending, we're starting to see a decrease in those number of cases, bringing us to a total of 341 new cases compared to 467 at the start of this last month. When we look at Flagstaff as a whole, we are continuing to see the largest number of cases in the Coconino County geographic area. Again, still followed by our tribal communities. When we're considering our hospital admissions, we are starting to see an increase over the past couple of weeks. 23 cases for a week ending 11/20, and then 28 cases week ending 11/27. The majority of these cases of hospitalization are ages 65 and older, followed by ages 55 to 64. COVID-related deaths this week, this last week reported of November 27 seemed to be on a downturn. Prior to that, we had experienced four weeks that had five COVID-related deaths per week, starting October 30 and continuing through week ending 11/20. Hopeful that this most recent report will stay up to you and will continue to see this downward trend. Community transmission remains at a high level. We have come down in the number of cases per 100,000. We're now at 241 compared to 315.2 at the beginning of November. Our percent positivity, though, has increased from 7.6% to 10.9%. And our percent of COVID-like illness has also increased from 9.9%, excuse me, from 7.3% to 9.9%. I apologize for that. Looking at our community vaccinations, we continue to see this number climb. Beginning of November, we had 62.2% of our Coconino County residents vaccinated, and we now are at 66.5%. Our COVID variants include samples from Coconino County that have been tested through November. The variant of concern continues to be the Delta variant. We are now at 1,858 cases that had the Delta variant strand compared to 1,483 cases during our last report, November 6. The total vaccine breakthrough is 8.5% of all cases, and this compares to 6.9% included in the last report. When listening to Coconino County Health and Human Services during Monday's call, they attributed this percentage to growing as we get further away from when folks were fully vaccinated. Looking at the Northern Arizona Healthcare Report, they have recorded 48 positive cases, which is an increase from the report in November. We also have 46 hospital beds that are available as of the day of this report, which was December 5. This is higher than the 32 that were included in our last update to City Council. The critical care beds does remain at zero, and this is the same as was reported during our last presentation. I will now turn it over to Rose Tohe, so she can go over our Indigenous Nations data.
And good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you again for this opportunity. Rose Tohe, Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. So right now, you will see the chart up there for Navajo Nation, and the total testing has always been high these past few months, and they are above 22,000, 22,328. Negative cases tend to be just as high as well, 1762. However, confirm, positive cases tend to kind of fluctuate and, but still high for what's been in the last summer months, and that is 1,824. Recoveries are at 2,063, and then deaths increased to 35 for the current 21 days, or the last 21 days. Hopi, I'm equating this to the holidays, and so I don't have a lot of information on here, and also saw a typo in my difference of days, and that should be 28 days. And it looks like the positive cases only increased by 10, which is not a high number, which is very, very good. Next. And then as far as Navajo Nation is concerned regarding the COVID cases attributed to the variant concerns, so on November 10, Navajo Nation COVID Dashboard reported that the COVID-19 cases attributed to variants of concern, which is the VLC. The Delta variant is at 788, and the Delta epsilon is at 81. And then the public health emergency orders remain the same. There were three public health order released, two in August and one in October of 2021. And they cover continuing orange status for businesses and then also declaring orange status for schools, and then reemphasizing safer at home. That includes gathering limits and mandatory wearing masks in public. So those are still the same. The Health Advisory for 65 Communities is that the Navajo Nation Department of Health on November 29, they released a health advisory notice, which issued uncontrolled spread of COVID-19 advisory for 65 communities. And this is up by nine communities since their last report. Again, schools serving those communities are two layers of mitigation to meet the high level of these cases, of the transmission cases. And then also issued health advisory about booster for ages 18 and older. So on November 19, Navajo Nation Department of Health and the Navajo Nation Health Command Operations Center issued a health advisory for booster doses. And of the three vaccines that are available among all vaccinated individuals 18 years and older, and so individuals are supposed to locate... And so individuals are supposed to locate, contact their local health providers and facilities to get those boosters. And so the Navajo Nation is highly encouraging people to do that. Hopi Tribe also, as well, is recommending vaccinations and boosters, and they are just asking all eligible members to get vaccinated and to obtain their boosters and contacting their health providers and facilities. And continuing with the third part of phased reopening, there's no change here. The Hopis Executive Order for their phased reopening is still the same, which recommends continued face masking inside all public buildings, common areas, and outdoor locations. This executive order also states that employers may resume unrestricted staffing of work sites. But the businesses have to be able to demonstrate that these workplaces and staff are being protected. COVID variant testing, SARS-CoV-2 variant testing at the Hopi Healthcare Center on October 7th, this is kind of new on their website, is that it revealed that they had 67 samples sequenced and collected between June 18th and September 16th. 21 of those indicate the following. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. That was the year I just said. So between June 18th and September 16th, 56 of those 67 samples, 56 Delta, and two of them are Alpha and nine are Undetermined. But since June 18th, anything that they've sequenced were of the Delta variant. And then the earliest one they had detected was collected on June 23rd. So it seems like Delta is pretty much running very high. And then the Delta variant has also caused cases among the unvaccinated, partially vaccinated, and fully vaccinated. So those are what's going on with the Delta at the Hopi Tribe. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rose. And I hear it is your birthday today.
It is.
Happy birthday, Rose. Clifton, where's the cake? Come on. I teased. Vice Mayor, did you have any?
No, I wanted to make sure that you saw that.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. Happy birthday from us all on the dais. Councilmember Shimoney?
I do have a couple of comments. I also want to wish you a happy birthday, Rose. So grateful for you in this community and working with the city. But I guess my comment and question is actually more for our city manager or for even Stacy potentially. I know that our commissions are meeting regularly, but I see on our website that the commission videos aren't all being archived. Is there a way to make sure that all the different commission meetings are archived on the city website?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Shimoney. Not all of our boards and commission meetings are recorded or livestreamed. So that was something that we had in the past, but it has since gone away just due to budgeting concerns, with only a couple of commissions being able to be livestreamed and recorded. We can look down the road on some other options perhaps to record those meetings, but at this time, they are not being recorded.
Thanks, and I'll add to that. Yeah, this has been discussed, you know, usually in the budget process. We are anxious to get back to where all of our commission meetings are livestreamed and available. And I think we're hopeful that that's not too far in the distant future. I think council could expect this to be a talking point during the budget discussions that will be following, starting on Thursday. You know, there's another complication too, which, and it's been alluded to today. We're not fully opened yet. We're still in Phase 3 of the reentry. And so our facilities, with some exceptions, like this council meeting, which is a hybrid meeting and many people attending virtually. But, you know, until such time, and we're hopeful that this is in the not-too-distant future as well, we can see our facilities reopen, get back to business as usual, and we look forward to having the discussion about livestreaming all the commission meetings. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, city manager. And yeah, just the more engaged with the commissions, the more I learn how important their service is and how great our staff is working with those commissions. And I just would love to see that. But yeah, we'll have that conversation on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
As a close follow-up to that last discussion, I guess I'll ask this question to the city clerk. It's come to my attention that some of the committees or commissions do not have minutes. They don't record minutes. And I'm just wondering if that's always been the policy or if that's something new.
Again, thank you for the question, Councilmember McCarthy. That should not be occurring. All commission meetings are required to have minutes, and they should be posted to the website. So we will be sure to take a look and do an audit, find out what's missing, and we will get with those commissions immediately to get that rectified.
I can talk to you offline about where to look.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Fobar? What? Oh, he can talk to Fobar. Okay. That's what she was signaling.
So I should talk to Ms. Fobar?
Yes.
I don't want to talk to her. No, I'll talk to her.
All right, anything regarding questions of the COVID update from council? Yep.
One last thing, I'm sorry. It'd be great at some point if we can get Dr. Ingolthor back with us for another update now that we're experiencing another phase of COVID and another, as it continues to evolve in this new variant. If possible, at some point in the next month or so, I don't know if it's at all possible, but I would appreciate an update from him and his thoughts as to how we progress. Just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anything else? I don't see anything from electronically. Okay, well, with that, we are down to our council liaison reports. And let's do it in roll call order this time. How about that? I don't have anything, no updates today on the liaisons. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of things. The Housing Commission has three open seats in the Building and Real Estate Professionals category. And the 10-year, the draft 10-year housing plan is going to be presented to the Housing Commission on January 27th, and then it will be before the city council on February 15th. And the Open Space Commission has two open seats. And the draft Greater Observatory Mesa Trail Planning Plan will be released to the public for comment after the first of the year.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, mayor. I don't have much to report out to the group. I did chair our Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council Board Meeting and also Metro Plan. I'm hoping maybe Councilmember McCarthy or Solis will have more to say about that. And otherwise, not much to report out to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. As Mr. Aslan pointed out, we had a Metro Plan, which is the Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization. We had a meeting this last week, which I chaired. I also attended the Transportation Commission meeting and the Bike Committee meeting. And I think Mr. Shimoney sat in on that. Thank you. And we spent about an hour and a half talking about the Lone Tree and Butler interchange, with some ideas were tossed back and forth about how we might improve that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add more details to the recent Metro Plan Executive Board Meeting, Councilmember McCarthy is going on another year of his term as chair for the incoming calendar year. And Supervisor Horstman has stepped down as chair, and it will be Supervisor Heronimo Vazquez as vice chair of the Metro Plan Executive Board. Now, at that recent meeting, Mr. Jeff Malback, our executive director for the Metro Plan, has provided a big-picture presentation of the recent bipartisan infrastructure deal, which calls out $110 billion in transportation, $65 billion in broadband, rail, $66 billion, airports, $25 billion, public transit, $39 billion. Energy, environment, climate is over $150 million, billion. We're talking about billions here. And then electric vehicle charging, $8 billion, safety, $11 billion, and other such as electric buses. So this just presents the fact that the infrastructure bill pursues an expanded view of priorities when it comes to transportation infrastructure that adds to, that speaks to resiliency, equity, carbon neutrality, multimodal transportation, active transportation. So those funding mechanisms will be available for Metro Plan as well as city when it comes to our projects such as the Lone Tree Overpass, Lone Tree Corridor, our active transportation master plan, multimodal transportation system, our transit system, as well as bicyclists and pedestrian safety, as well as railroad crossing, which will also be beneficial to our downtown projects. So I'm just excited about all the funding mechanisms that will be available for us, either through the formula funding that is afforded to metropolitan planning organizations and through grants and competitive process. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, mayor. A few things. I also was able to attend the Bicycle Advisory Committee with Councilmember McCarthy, and thank you for always showing up for those committees and commissions. I really appreciate that, and I know the committee members do too. Great discussions being had, a lot happening in the bicycle world, as everyone knows, here in town, and it's very exciting. Yesterday, we also had a Coconino 911 diversion conversation. That was our monthly call with an update from the Crisis Response Network, the CRN, and our local taros agency, talking to the group about how many calls were diverted from the police department through our dispatch to these alternative approaches. And Matt from the CRN spoke to their efforts down in Mesa, where Mesa's police department and their dispatch has decided to directly transfer calls that were more mental health-related, just the way we do for fire calls. So rather than asking, hey, would you like to be transferred to another service? They just transfer that call. And so they're seeing a huge uptick in calls going transferred to the CRN in Mesa, which is exciting, and they're working through the kinks. And our team is exploring how we can potentially adopt something similar, but that's all in the very early stages. So stay posted on that. Very exciting stuff. But last month, we had a lot of calls diverted from our police department to the CRN, Crisis Response Network, resulting in a handful of taros dispatched calls, I guess you could say. Still not a great, great number, but for year one of this effort, I think we're right on track to build upon these successes. The RARE Assessment, the Rapid Assessment, Response, and Evaluation Effort in partnership with NACA is well underway. They started training last week and conclude training today. It's a great group of individuals that NACA has helped to assemble, to train, to go out as of tomorrow through Sunday in our community and engage with unsheltered relatives specifically, focusing on Indigenous populations and trying to better understand their realities, their concerns, their comments, and their feedback to us, the council, and the city, and help us identify how to best move forward with the funding that we have allocated for our care center and our alternate response efforts. So extremely excited about that group's efforts. They had a lot of questions. I was glad I was there to help answer a lot of their questions and support them and empower them. So cheers to that group that's happening. I also got to meet with NAH leadership, the hospital leadership, this past week, and talk about workforce housing, and specifically at a lower AMI level. So maybe more of like a tax credit development on their new property, along with their current property. So I'm very proud that Steve Ice at NAH is open and excited to explore tax credit housing, both at their current location on North Beaver in San Fran, in downtown area, along with at the new site. And so I'm just trying to help them connect to resources and individuals that can help them further pursue that effort. And then lastly, I'm just continuing to communicate with Audra Merrick at ADOT about Milton and the Fort Valley Corridor. They have made some good steps, but there's so much more to go. And I also was able to connect with Miles from FMPO Metro Plan. And I'm trying to further understand how all these different major groups are working together and where I can help further connect efforts and empower us to really live up to our values and our goals. I think that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McCarthy?
Just a quick follow-up to Adam's comments about Milton Avenue. I think people would be interested that the ADOT is just about ready to release their final plan. As Adam mentioned, we're involved with trying to maybe get some improved pedestrian crossings and some improved bike lanes, et cetera. But the FMPO has not made any formal comments to the plan yet because it's not out yet. But when it comes out, I'm sure it will come before the planning organization and very possibly, I hope, before this council because Milton Avenue is obviously a very important corridor for the city. There's, you know, some issues. Other issues are there's tentatively some islands being planned in there, and some of the businesses are concerned that that will be detrimental to their businesses. So those are things that we can talk about when the plan is finalized, which should be very soon. Thank you.
Aslan, thank you, councilmember. We are now down to agenda item 8A. This is the Consideration of Appointment to Parks and Recreation Commission. There is four appointments. The staff recommended action is to make two appointments to terms expiring August 2022 and make two appointments to terms expiring August 2024. And I believe Councilmember Sweet is the first up for, yeah, appointment.
Thank you, mayor. I move to appoint Josh Stackhouse to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring August of 2024.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Next is Councilmember Shimoney for the next appointment.
Thank you, Josh. This is a tough decision.
Yeah, I'm pretty impressed of how many applicants we've gotten for these. This is really great.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead. Thank you for buying me a couple more seconds. I would like to appoint Dana Roden to a term ending in August 2024.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next up for grabs is Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, mayor. And I'd like to thank all of the applicants. It is very exciting to have this many volunteers stepping up, ready to serve. I would like to move to appoint Brenda Linsky to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring August 2022.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Solis, you got the fourth appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to reappoint current Commissioner Stephen Parsons.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are down to Agenda Item 8B. This is the Consideration of Appointment for our Tourism Commission. Staff recommended action is to make one appointment to a term expiring January 2024, and to make three appointments to terms expiring January 2025. Let me make sure I got the right order here. And first up for grabs, Councilmember Shimonie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an appointment of Jonathan Stone to a seat expiring in January 2025.
I'll second that.
Have that seconded by Councilmember Aslan. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a legal question, if I may.
Yes. Sterling?
I think we need to, I'd like to move to an executive session.
I'll second that.
All right.
We need to go into executive session.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Moving to session. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Upstairs we go.
All right, Stacy, we would just, Stacy, we would just need to be able to call into us.
I would like to register my no vote for going into executive session.
Thank you, Council.
There's a motion on the table.
Okay, Mayor, thank you for the extra time. I am ready to go.
All right. Well, we do have a motion on the table for the appointment to the Tourism Commission. Does, just to restate, this was for making one appointment to a term expiring January 2024. Oh, 2025? Okay. So there's a motion on the table for that. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have that seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett.
No, I already seconded that. I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded it before?
Yes.
That's correct, Mayor. Councilmember Aslan did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I must not have heard. So it's already seconded?
I was trying to say that again, but I was muted.
Councilmember Aslan, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
That motion carries 5-2. All right, next is Councilmember Aslan for appointment.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I would, I'm going to nominate George Aberbeck to be on the Tourism Commission. He's a local downtown business owner. He's been on commissions before. I'm going to recommend the term expiring in January of 2024.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is Vice Mayor Daggett.
I move that we nominate Jennifer Rowley to the Tourism Commission with a term expiring January 2025.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Terry Medeska to the Tourism Commission with a term expiring January of 2025.
I second that. Oh, Councilmember Aslan seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are now down to Agenda Item 8C. This is the Consideration of Appointments for the Water Commission, and I am first up on the list here. So I move to appoint Donald Bills to the Water Commission for a term expiring December 2024.
I'll second that.
I second that.
Oh, Shimonie beat you. Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, real quickly, I just wanted to say Donald is a USGS alumni is not the right word, but it's not coming to me. Anyway, he's got a long history with USGS. He serves on the board of the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council and comes highly recommended. So appreciate the nomination.
With 43 years of experience, so definitely going to be a valuable asset, I believe, on the Water Commission. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next is Vice Mayor.
I'd like to move to appoint Malcolm Alter to the Water Commission with a term expiring December 2024.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next is Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes. Yes, I would like to appoint Joe Lovrich for a term expiring in December 2024.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I move to appoint Robert Dilday to the Water Commission with a term expiring December 2023.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Councilmember Aslan, you're next.
How many terms do we have left?
I think we're down to, we have only the 2023 appointments now.
Okay, thanks for tallying that up. I would like to nominate-
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry, we have one for December of 2024 and two left for December of 2023. No?
I don't think that's correct.
We have- We've made three appointments for December 2024. Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote 2024 twice.
No worries. So just to clear it up, we have all three 2024 taken care of.
Correct.
And one of 2023.
That is correct. So we have two more for 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to nominate Kurt Regelman for one of those 2023 appointments.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate John Nauman for a term expiring December 2023.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. I did have a question on this, because we have all seven members of council on the council appointment assignments, but only six positioned. Is that correct? Did we just-
That is correct. I think it was just a misprint on that.
Okay, no problem. Well, then, yeah, so they're council members, surely. All right, well, then we are down to our liquor license public hearing. This is a consideration and action on liquor license application for Chad Earl Doyle Chevron at 1785 South Railroad Springs Boulevard, Series 9 Liquor Store for all spirituous liquor, and it's an owner transfer. With that, I will open up the public hearing, and, yeah, good word from staff here.
Thank you, Council Mayor Ryan Turley from the Flexup Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the application in front of you. I found no derogatory records for the business owner or the business itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a desire to present to council? Or we can keep pressing on? All right. Council, any questions? And any public comment? All right, well, with that, I'm closing the public hearing, and I move to forward the application to the state with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, Councilmember McCarthy?
I think we're moving on to consent items, right?
Yes.
Okay. D is in Delta, has been moved to later in the agenda, I believe. So that leaves A, B, and C. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
I would like to consider all three of those separately, because I have some brief comments and/or questions on several of them.
All right, sounds good. Well, then we are down to Consent Item 10A. This is the Consideration and Approval of Grant Application for Buffalo Park Nate Avery Trail Accessibility Enhancements through the Arizona State Parks Heritage Fund. Staff recommended action is to approve the application to Arizona State Parks Heritage Fund for grant funds in the amount of $100,000 with the city mansion and in-kind contribution of $135,453. Is that one you had questions on?
That's one of them, yes. Thank you for coming up. I had some questions about what material we were going to use for the trails, and you sent me an email and gave me an answer. But I guess my question, it still remains, is what's the durability of that material? If it's just kind of like gravel with some kind of binder, is it going to hold up in such a manner that it'll be useful to, you know, small skinny wheels that are on wheelchairs, et cetera? So that's my question.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Yes, the surface will hold up. I think, Mr. McCarthy, you did receive an email earlier this afternoon from Martin Ince, where you provided some additional information regarding the product. If you'd like, I could share some of that.
Yeah, the problem is, of course, we've been in e-session since 11 o'clock, so I never saw that email.
Absolutely makes sense.
So if it's easy to share, that'd be great. If not, just kind of talk to it.
Sure, absolutely. So the product, it is, it is a decomposed granite, quarter inch minus. It does have some plasticity into it, so some clay, for lack of a better term, and when compacted with water, it will create kind of a lovely compacted surface. We do have three trail segments where we've recently used this product, one of them being the, a trail segment along Lone Tree, one of them being Sheep's Crossing, and another one, I believe Mr. Ince referenced, was the Santa Fe Trail. So we're seeing some very positive results from using this product. We have been using it on our foot trail segments for about five years now, and we did review the product with the commission on inclusion and adaptive living, and they have also approved the use of this product.
Okay, I appreciate you taking the time to be here and to answer my questions, and I don't have any personal knowledge of it, but it sounds like you do and your team does. So I really do appreciate that. If Mr. Ince were here, he could probably comment on it, too. Oh, there he is.
I believe he's right behind me.
I think we've covered it. So I would move to approve Item 10A.
I second that. You have a question? Oh, Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to provide a space of gratitude and appreciation to staff, and specifically to Mr. Martin Ince, who was very instrumental in submitting the grant application, and I'm just in awe of our staff excellence and collaborative work, and thanks to our Parks and Recreation, oh, PROs, staff as well. And I also want to give the opportunity to Ms. Hagan to provide a comment on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Yes, I did want to extend gratitude to Martin Ince. He, it may be my name on the staff summary in the agenda item, but he has without a doubt done 95% of the work. So it's a thank you from the bottom of my heart to his.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, and really quick, I also want to express gratitude. I love these types of agenda items, seeing just that we're moving forward in a more of a universal design, accessible systems, and I'm just grateful. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or discussion? All right, with that, there is a motion on the table, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. The next item is our Consent Item 10B. This is the Consideration and Approval of Final Plat, PZ-17-00175-05. This is the Meramonte Birch and Verde LLC Request Final Plat Approval for Meramonte at Birch Avenue. Subdivision consists of 24 residential condominium units located at 304 to 316 each Birch Avenue. The condominium plat is on 0.53 acres in the T4 in one transect zone. Staff recommended action is to approve the final plat and authorize the mayor to sign both the plat and city subdivider agreement with notified by staff that all documents are ready for recording. Councilmember?
I don't actually have a question. I had a question, but Tiffany was so gracious to answer it by yesterday, and my question was, was that will this facility have both trash chutes and recycling chutes? And the answer I got is yes, it will. So I just wanted to comment on that as a very positive thing, that hopefully all of future similar projects will have both trash and recycling provisions on an equal footing, which kind of follows up to some discussions we had a week or so ago. So in that regard, I would like to move to approve Item 10B.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Do I, I can second that, but I also have a little bit of concern and comment, and I know we don't have much leverage here, but if I can jump into my comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So my understanding is that this project is providing 29 parking spaces for the 24 units and a total of 10 bicycle spots. Again, 29 parking spots, but 10 bicycle spots. And this is in our central area, dense part of town, and so I'd like to see what we can do to improve on that number. Tiffany, do you know if Meramonte staff is on the line?
I'm not sure if they're on the line. Jack, are you with us today? Doesn't sound like it. I apologize.
So I don't necessarily want to stop this from moving forward, and I do understand that to make the adjustment, adjustment I'm looking to make, it's probably going to be a code adjustment or something in our planning documents, and I'm already talking to staff about figuring out how they go about that. But we keep talking about big shifts and sustainability and the need to start, you know, flipping the script on parking spaces for cars versus bikes, and I just was very concerned about seeing 10 spots in total for bicycles. So Tiffany, how would I communicate with Meramonte if, to see if they're willing and able to expand upon that?
I'm happy to communicate that information with them. You know, this has an indoor parking garage, so I'm sure they'll be willing to accommodate more parking space or more bicycle parking as feasible.
I really appreciate it, and if you can just maybe CC me or follow up with me however, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
That's good. Motion's on the table, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Shimonie. And I'm not sure. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are down to Agenda Item 10C.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you, Tiffany. 10C is the Consideration and Approval of Agreement, Assignment of Development Agreement and Waiver, which transfers the development agreement between the city and Flagstaff at Fourth LLC to Flagler Elkwood Partners LP. Staff recommended action is to approve the assignment of Development Agreement and Waiver. Councilmember McCarthy?
I move to approve this item.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman McCarthy, seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. All right, this might be a decent time to take a little break. What do you think, council? Before we get into our- Before we get into our routine items? All right, well, let's take 16 minutes. So I'll be back here at 5:10, and we'll get started with the routine items, Agenda 11 onward. So, thanks. Start going here? All right. We are now down to agenda item 11A. This is our routine items, consideration and possible action, cancellation of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2021.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. I actually don't have a presentation. I'm here for any questions. I think the item's fairly straightforward. We just need some, an action of council if your desire is to cancel the meeting of December 21st.
Sounds good.
Yes, December 21st, 2021.
All right. The honorary motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to cancel the regular meeting on December 21st, 2021.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shimon is seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 11B is a consideration approval of contract for professional services contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design LLP in the amount of $70,518. Staff recommended action is to approve the professional services contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design LLP in the amount of $70,518. Mr. Seimer?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Staff doesn't have a presentation on this item, although we are available for any comments, and I'll be at your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, council? All right, well, then I move to approve the professional services contract with Makers Architecture and Urban Design LLP in the amount of $70,518.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now down to agenda item 12A. This is the public hearing and consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-58, Carbon Neutrality Major Regional Plan Amendment. Staff recommended action is to hold public hearing. So now officially opening up the public hearing, and yeah, take us away.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sarah Decter. I am the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff. And I'm bringing you major plan amendments fits within my work program. Today I am here to present PZ case 21-00124, which is a carbon neutrality major plan amendment. This is a text amendment to the Flagstaff Regional Plan that was initiated by the Planning and Zoning Commission on behalf of the Sustainability Commission. Whoa, let's see. All right, so this is a text amendment. It falls under the major plan amendment category nine. When we add or delete or any goal or policy in any chapter of the plan, this category was added in 2016 by the city council. When we're doing a major plan amendment, there are several additional procedures. Let's see if I can get the color go back to normal. There are several additional procedures for the process of approving this amendment. A 60-day public review is required, which was completed. There's notification of specific agencies and utilities throughout the state and county, a citizen review session, two public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission in different physical locations, and this decision requires a two-thirds majority of the council to approve. So the plan amendment proposal for tonight, which the applicant is, on the staff side, is Jenny Nieman, representing the city as applicant and the city reviewing it, of course. We try and split those roles. She has proposed changes to the narrative of Chapter Four of the Flagstaff Regional Plan, as well as revisions to certain goals and policies and the addition of three policies. This particular part, E and C 2.3, 3.5, and 3.6 is the trigger for the major plan amendment. Through the analysis of all the goals and policies in the regional plan that is part of your packet, it was also advised in consultation with the Engineering Division that the Transportation Chapter has a policy, policy T.8.1, and we'll go over these a little bit, that could be reworded for clarity to ensure that it is not a conflicting policy to the aims of this amendment. So this is a close-up view of the red line that you will find in your packet under the carbon neutrality amendment text revisions. So I don't think I need to read these, but what you can see is that the previous version of these pages really focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but not as quickly as the goal that is currently adopted by the city council of achieving carbon neutrality by 2030. So these revisions are largely to the point of making sure that council has direction in redevelopment cases and consideration of future zoning code changes that supports related decision-making. Are there any questions about the revised and new policies under E and C 2?
I'm not seeing any. Please proceed.
Thank you. So E and C 3, which is one that focuses on preparedness, was reworded primarily because the science on climate change, preparedness, and resiliency has been rapidly evolving since this language was originally adopted in 2014. These amendments make this much clearer. They also adopt, under E and C 3.2, the first of two amendments that bring equity into our considerations with climate change and carbon neutrality. This is a part that was not included in most of the regional plan that was adopted in 2014. There's really only one equity policy in our transportation section, and otherwise the plan is very silent on the topic of equity. So as that has become a greater focus of our public engagement and our policy work at the city, it's appropriate to be adding that material to these sections of the plan. Likewise, there's two new policies under E and C 3, particularly E and C 3.5 is the second one that adopts more of an equity focus. And E and C 3.6 does the same, talks about the equitable distribution of benefits and burdens. Are there any questions on E and C 3 before I proceed?
I'm not seeing any. Go ahead.
Great. The changes under E and C 4 is more clarification of providing clearer language that shows that the vulnerabilities and risks of Flagstaff's natural resources should be assessed in the context of anticipated climate change and not current conditions. So that's a clarification, obviously something that fell within the original policy, but allows for more specificity. The wording revision in T.8.1 was one that we discussed with the traffic engineer. Originally, the language was vaguer, and it talked about importance of effective transportation connectivity to major places. So that seemed very vehicle-oriented, when really we were also interpreting this policy to be about the network connectivity within our activity centers and within employment centers and districts. So staff had already been viewing this language that way, but we felt the language could be clearer so there would not be a perceived conflict.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I find the use of the word network to be a little bit strange. Do you want to elaborate on that, or?
Sure. There's sort of two ways to look at efficiency when we talk about transportation. There's financial efficiency of build just the roads we need and the minimum. But what if we, what we want to achieve is carbon neutrality, what we really need is network efficiency, so that there's alternative routes and shortest distances between multiple locations across the region. That allows for better multimodal infrastructure to be coincidence with streets and freight corridors. And it also supports more trip, while there may be equal trip generation, trip distances may be shortened by having a complete network.
So I probably would not have chosen that word, but I can live with it.
Any other questions on this item?
Good, please proceed.
So why is the plan amendment we are proposing today necessary? The climate action work of the city has been evolving rapidly. Adopting this amendment will reduce confusion, increase transparency, and provide more consistent decision-making. The regional plan, unlike the carbon neutrality plan, is used in the context of zoning code updates and zoning code amendments. And so this gives a stronger position policy-wise to city council when those kinds of discretionary decisions are before this body and before the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, I should state, before I move on, that it's not intended that every new development would be a carbon neutral development, but that they would all be taking steps necessary to create a city, neighborhood, broader area that can be moving towards carbon neutrality. That's, I think, an important clarification and a question we had from the public through the process. So any other questions on the content of the amendment?
Nope, please proceed.
Okay. The required process, which has been followed in this case, is a mandatory pre-application meeting, reviewing the amendment and having the commission initiate an amendment. Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council are the two bodies that are authorized to do that. We provided draft amendment language and impact analysis, which was taken through the inter-division staff review process, just like a development application. The application had to be deemed complete by a particular deadline and then substantively complete by the end of July. During the 60-day public review, the application was submitted to the State Department of Commerce, Coconino County, surrounding federal land agencies, and utility companies throughout the region. And we also held neighborhood meetings virtually and in person, and the application was moved forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their hearings at the Murdoch Center and the Aquaplex. No one attended in person in either location, and everyone had the option to attend virtually. The impact analyses associated with this are a little different than the ones you see on a development application because they are largely qualitative and talking about cause and effect relationships that we can consider from this policy changes. A few of them were waived by the planning director. Water and wastewater impact analyses, a cultural resource study, which usually means that there has to be some land or an impact to the system that can be measured. And this FUSD waived the requirement for school impact analysis. There's no impact to the regional plan maps or the supply of land zoned in any particular category from this amendment. Transportation. So transportation impacts were considered as transportation is one of the largest areas of influence when we're talking about carbon neutrality. But it was found that the impacts to vehicle traffic were in line with the overall goals of the regional plan. The housing division section also looked at the impacts of climate change in how they might affect the ability to provide affordable housing in the region, especially in the face of climate migration. The Public Services and Facilities Impact Analysis benefits from the increased resiliency and preparedness provided by this policy and also from reduced energy costs after initial investments are considered. The Economic Development Analysis is the most interesting. There are definitely a variety of costs and benefits outlined in this impact analysis. Of course, one being considered is that action now, when thinking of climate change, is less expensive than delaying and causing future impacts, waiting until impacts are greater, and then trying to mitigate. So avoidance and preparedness are emphasized. There's also opportunities to collaborate between businesses and service providers to ensure that the adaptation to climate change can be an economic benefit. Police and fire also determined that there would be no impact from these policies. So there are several findings we need to make in accordance with the major plan amendment. First, we must find that the goals and policies support the amendment, which is our finding of substantial conformance. We find that that is the case for this amendment. Quality of open space can be maintained, water resources and energy use will be more sustainable, and we will have better aligned policies. There are some policies that, when we discuss them with the community, seem potentially conflicting. Dark skies came up in particular because dark skies lighting is less energy efficient than standard LED lighting. We, however, as the city, have been working through that process of trying to find a balance between those two goals and policies. And so it was not considered that that this would necessarily be a conflicting policy that would overcome the conformance finding. Also, increasing densities sometimes and have throughout the life of this plan conflicted with some of the community character goals that talk about views and view shed management. Staff has recommended, and there have been petitions to do a better job in our next regional plan update of prioritizing view shed for mitigation. And then T.8.4 and 8.5, which are in the automotive section, can also be provided a better outcome with improved design. Excuse me. It's hard to talk that fast with a mask on. Finding number two is community benefits, and there are several reasons, as we've discussed, that this finding has been made in favor of the amendment. And then last, but not least, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a change to the language of E and C 3.6, which originally stated it was attempt to achieve, and now they would like it to say commitment in terms of equitably distributing burdens of benefits. And with that, and you're, the resolution before you includes the language that is proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, not the original language. And that is it. And Jenny Nieman is here as the applicant, and I'll let her stand up. She has a few words.
Thanks so much, Sarah. Thank you, Mayor and council. We do not have a formal presentation tonight because we got to have our conversation a little less than a month ago here. I do have that presentation available if anyone has any questions, and I am happy to answer any questions otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions of the applicant? All right, well, with that, we do have one public participant. Thank you, Jenny. David McCain.
All right, thanks again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Yes, this is David McCain, 515 West Cherry Avenue, Apartment B. And while I am a member of the Sustainability Commission, I'm not empowered to speak for them, so I am speaking as a private citizen. And I think the commission was very proud to instigate, to initiate this major plan amendment back in March. And I just wanted to really reflect on all the language that you guys are faced with in this kind of decision. Policies, commitments, equitable distribution, goals, impacts, recommendations. But why, why is the city making climate action an integral part of everything you're doing? Why, why are you all doing that? Well, first, we can say to meet the mission, to live the mission, but ultimately, ultimately it's to reduce suffering. That's why we are doing climate action, and that's why it needs to be in the marrow, in the threads of everything the city's doing. We've just been through and are still currently in this COVID situation that has led to about 800,000 deaths in the US and about 5.6 million deaths worldwide. And that's a big deal. The suffering that is in store, really no matter what we do, is going to be much more than that. And it is much more than that. A lot of people are suffering right now. So I just wanted to kind of give a less bureaucratic, technical plea, and I know this resonates with all of you, that what you're doing is reducing suffering. That's what climate action means for the City of Flagstaff. And I really appreciate that all of you have stepped forward in so many ways and given guidance to sustainability, worked with sustainability, and I have so much appreciation for the Sustainability Section for everything they've done. And just again, just want to make it clear that it's not about policies and, you know, recommendations. It's about reducing suffering. So thank you for doing that by getting climate action in the marrow of the city, and I look forward to continuing to do that. And also, I look forward to the difficult decisions of the tensions that are involved with this. The airport being one. We want more airport traffic and less emissions. We need to resolve stuff like that, and that's, I guess, where the real challenge is. So thanks for all you've done, and I strongly encourage you to support this major plan amendment.
Thank you, David. Do we have, I don't see that we have anyone online. Is that correct? All right. With that, we're ready to close the public hearing. And on the other side here. And on the other side here. And I'd like to move to read Resolution Number 2021-58 by title only. Don't jump too fast. Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? Councilmember McCarthy?
I'd like to make an amendment. My amendment is we change the word network to transportation network. If, she could probably bring that slide back up. The word network is meaningless. Transportation network means a lot.
If I could maybe ask the applicant, if that deters from the message and intent to have transportation network as opposed to, yeah?
Yes, Mayor and Council members. So I don't think it does. I think it adds clarity. I think it's helpful to, the reason we didn't have it in here, because maybe just the way that it's written within the plan, it sort of has transportation all over the page, right? It's transportation, transportation, right? It's within the transportation section. But when you see it alone, which is when we do right now and many times in your work, I don't think that that is, I think that's helpful clarity. That doesn't change it in any way. So I think that's completely fine. I want to defer to Sarah to make sure that that doesn't change anything in her mind, as Sarah deals a lot more with these policies on a day-to-day basis, but I think that it really just adds clarity. So I think that's fine.
I don't think that would change the meaning of the policy or take away from the clarity being added by these minor work changes, so.
I'd be willing to support that. Sterling, if you could help us correct, do I need to withdraw my motion and make the amendment, or?
Actually, Council Mayor, Council, Councilmember McCarthy stated he wanted to make an amendment. He can simply make a motion to do so, and then that would require a second, and then you would vote on both of them together.
Okay.
So just to clarify, I moved that we change the word network on 8, excuse me, T. 8.1 to the phrase transportation network.
I second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council amending the Flagstaff Regional Plan 2030 by amending chapters four and 10 to address the 2021 Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan and establishing an effective date as amended.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Point of order. I believe there was a motion on the table for the read the resolution, and then I made a motion to amend that. So we voted on my motion to amend, but we never did vote on the motion to read.
City Attorney mentioned we could do that vote together. But, yeah, City Attorney.
Yes, as stated by the City Clerk when she did the reading, it was the motion as amended that was voted on. So it was all in one.
All right. Well, then, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-58 with the aforementioned amendment.
And I would love to second that.
Thank you for stating that, Mayor. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting, but thank you for stating as amended, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Keeping us straight from above. That's seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Great work. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. This is a big lift.
If I only suggest one word change of the whole document, that must mean they did a very good job.
Means a lot coming from McCarthy especially. We are down to Agenda Item 13A. This is of our regular agenda. This is a consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-55, a resolution to adopt the Coconino County Multijurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Any staff, take us away.
Deputy Chief Jerry Bills here, Mayor, and Council, to answer any questions you might have on this item. I do not have a presentation.
All right. Counsel, any questions at this time? Go for it.
I move to read Resolution 2021-55 by title only.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 13B.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, you, sorry. Yep, City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the April 2021 Coconino County Multijurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan and repealing Resolution 2016-07, adopting the prior plan.
I move to adopt.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now we're down to Agenda Item 13B, which is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-57, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Flagstaff and Maricopa County for the police training and certification of police recruits at the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Training Academy. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2021-57 by title only.
Thank you, Council, Mayor, and Vice Mayor. I'm internally on behalf of the Police Department to present on this IGA. This IGA is simply to authorize the use of the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Training Academy to train future recruits of our police department. Currently, we use about six academies throughout the state, to include Yuma, Arizona. Yuma's a great academy. It is just far for our employees. They have to be down there four days a week, and if they have family here in Flagstaff, it's a difficult six-hour drive for them to get to the academy and to come back. And we would like to add this training academy to a list of available academies we can use. Reviews from this academy from our sister agencies in the region have been very positive, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have just one question. Is there a standard curriculum for all of the academies?
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't say standard. Each academy is a little bit different. The state has minimum amount of hours that each academy has to reach. The state's minimum is 663 hours. The Maricopa County Sheriff's Training Academy is 920 hours. And each academy and each training hour, we have specifics, like you have to have 16 hours in defensive tactics or eight hours in driving and stuff. It's broken out throughout about 22 weeks worth of training.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? All right.
I move to read Resolution 2021-57 by title only.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Maricopa County and the city of Flagstaff for the police training and certification of recruits at the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Training Academy.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-57.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 13C is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-56, resolution of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a pre-annexation agreement between Robert Hafa and Christine Newell and the city of Flagstaff related to the future annexation of approximately 0.18 acres of real property generally located at 221 South Dunham Street, requiring future annexation as a condition for a connection to the city sewer system.
Just looking for the button to go to presentation mode. Usually it's down here. You can have a suggestion. Thanks, Stacy. Oh, perfect.
Stacy to the rescue.
Yep. Thanks, Stacy. All right. So my name is Genevieve Parthree, Senior Planner with the current planning section, and I'm here to present this case. So it's a pre-annexation agreement for 221 South Dunham Street. The purpose of this pre-annexation agreement is for the property to have out-of-city sewer service. This is from Robert Hafa and Christine Newell. They're the current owners of the property there. It actually includes two lots. It has a single-family home. They have an aging septic system that needs replacement, so they're requesting to connect to an eight-inch sewer line that is adjacent to their property. So here is where 221 South Dunham Street is located in West Flagstaff. It's in a county island, so the property is that yellow box with the red outline. It is within the regulatory jurisdiction of Coconino County. However, there are five properties on the street that already have out-of-city sewer service. Those are those blue boxes you can see on the screen. So this is the proposed plan. This is conceptual, not any sort of final engineered drawings. They'll get to that point in the future if this request is approved. However, this is from their concept plan. So we can see this is the property. There's a single-family house. There's a second tiny remnant parcel here that they own both of those. There's an aging septic system. This is the proposed sewer line, and this is city of Flagstaff property in orange over here, and this is the city sewer line that they are requesting to connect to. So we're here with a pre-annexation request because it's water services policy that when a county resident requests a city water sewer service, a pre-annexation agreement is required. This was presented to the Water Commission in October. They voted 4-0 in favor of recommending approval. So staff recommended action is to read the resolution and adopt the resolution. So available if you have any questions. The property owner is here as well.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. When a property comes into the city, it will have to have some zoning associated with it. How is that determined? What zoning will be applied to this piece of property?
Well, the most closest city zoning category is single-family residential. So in the pre-annexation agreement, which is Exhibit B, I believe, of the resolution, it states that will come in as single-family residential.
Okay, so it's documented in the, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? All right. Go for it.
I move to read Resolution 2021-56 by title only.
I second that. Any further discussion, Counsel? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
A resolution of the City Council of the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a pre-annexation agreement between Robert Hafa and Christine Newell and the city of Flagstaff related to the future annexation of approximately 0.18 acres of real property generally located at 221 South Dunham Street and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Down to Agenda Item 13D. This is the consideration and approval of parking demand study. Request by Mountain Line to approve a parking demand study for the new downtown connection center subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. Staff recommended action is, staff recommends the city council approve the parking demand study as presented. Councilmember McCarthy?
Shouldn't we be doing the one that was formerly known as 10D? Remember that got moved to?
That's correct. Mayor, we have a reorder of the agenda. This is Sterling Solomon. 13D is now resolutions resolving some litigation.
Excellent. Thanks for the catch. I have actually the old agenda printed out, so. One second here. Okay, this is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-59 and Resolution Number 2021-60 to settle pending litigation. Proposed settlement and pending litigation in two separate cases, City of Phoenix versus Orbits Worldwide Incorporated, 247 Arizona 234, 2019, and Terry versus City of Flagstaff et al., CV 2018-00150 are before the council for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Sterling Solomon, the city attorney. I don't have a presentation for you on this. As you stated, there are two separate resolutions here to resolve portions of two different cases. The first case being City of Phoenix versus Orbits Worldwide. Of course, City of Flagstaff is also a party to that case, and there are several online travel companies that we were seeking to collect local transaction privilege taxes as well as penalties and interest. We reached a potential partial settlement, and that needs to be authorized through this resolution. You've been advised on that in executive session. Likewise, the second resolution here is to authorize settlement in Terry versus City of Flagstaff. Again, we've reached a partial settlement with respect to a particular litigation subject, excuse me, in this case, and we are requesting counsel authorize that settlement through the second resolution. You will need to go through each resolution separately, but if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney.
So I move to read Resolution 2021-59 by title only.
I'll second.
The motion from Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the partial settlement of City of Phoenix et al. versus Orbits Worldwide et al. relating to collection of local transaction privilege taxes from online travel companies.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-59.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I move to read Resolution Number 2021-60 by title only.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. This is Sterling Solomon, city attorney. Again, I apologize for that. I misstated. This is not a partial settlement in the Terry matter. This is actually a full settlement of the case. So the reading can occur, and in the motion to adopt the resolution can continue to occur, but I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you, city attorney. Appreciate it. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the settlement of the matter of Georgia Terry v. City of Flagstaff et al., case number CV 2018-00150, currently pending in Coconino County Superior Court.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-60.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. We are down to now Agenda Item 13E. This is a consideration and approval of parking demand study. Request by Mountain Line to approve a parking demand study for the new downtown connection center subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. It's at the very top by the auto save.
Like, where did it go? Looking all over the bottom.
Thank you so much for your time tonight, Mayor and City Council. I know it's been a long day, so I really appreciate your attention on this matter. Tiffany Antall, Senior Planner in the Community Development Division. Tonight, I am here to represent a request by Mountain Line to approve a parking demand study for the new downtown connection center, which is subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit.
I do want to note that this conditional use permit will be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow night at their regular meeting at four o'clock. As you know, that any conditional use permit that is either approved or denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission, within 10 days of that decision, you have the ability to basically request review of that conditional use permit. I just sort of wanted to keep that in your mind tonight as you're going to see the concept plan that is subject to that conditional use permit. So if you're thinking of any questions or concerns, please be aware, again, just it's being held before Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow night. I will let you know first thing Thursday morning on the outcome of that hearing. So again, this request is for a parking demand study. Zoning Code contains specific provisions to allow a study or plan to be prepared to reduce the required parking on a site. The plan has to be prepared by a registrant licensed in the state of Arizona to reduce parking for any development. And the study is required to document how reductions are calculated. Any request that is greater than 30% requires the approval of city council. So staff on their side is able to do anything that's less than 30%. This is the Mountain Line proposal. They are proposing to redevelop the existing downtown connection center located on Phoenix Avenue in the Southside community on city-owned property through a multi-phase development approach. Downtown Connection Center falls under the Passenger Transportation Facility as defined in the zoning code. This particular use has been associated with this site since about 2008. However, when our code was adopted and changed in 2011, it now requires this facility to have a conditional use permit. The proposed redevelopment of the site does now fall under that need for the conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit was not ever issued or necessary in the past. City staff has been working with Mountain Line on a concept plan. And this concept plan has been submitted in conjunction with the required CUP application, which again is scheduled for tomorrow night. So I get to practice all in front of you. So here is that concept plan. You will see the phases outlined on this concept plan. So the first phase is that DCC building, which is between 18,000 and 21,000 square feet. And then we have the Bus Plaza, which is about 13 different bus bays. Included in that is the civic space. I do want to point out that there's civic space affiliated with both phases, Phase One and Phase Two. And then, of course, the future parking. So we have multiple options reserved on the site for future parking. One is leaving an option open for future surface parking. The second is leaving an option for a parking garage. Those options will let us in the, let us make multiple decisions based on funding in the future as to how best to serve those parking needs. I do want to point out that Phase Two, Phase Three, all occur after the Rio de Flag project has been completed. So right now, the priority phase is Phase One. So the parking demand study. The Downtown Connection Center is really a unique use, which is not adequately covered by the parking standards found within the zoning code. So there really isn't, and under the zoning code, it lists uses and it tells us what the parking requirement is. This is not one of those uses that is listed. So there's no designated parking calculation. So what does staff do in those instances? We pick the closest use. In this case, the building or the portion of the building that we're looking at will primarily be used for office uses. So that seemed like the best potential parking use to depend on. So, office use does require one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area. And that would result in a requirement of about 63 parking spaces for this facility. Large portions of the proposed building, however, are used by patrons and drivers of the Mountain Line buses. The drivers do not need to park on this site. There are other facilities in town where the bus drivers will be able to park. They use this more as a comfort station, as a place to take a break and respite. And they are not in need of parking spaces to access all of the resources of the downtown center. So those portions of the facility designed for those uses have been specifically eliminated from the parking requirements for the site. Additionally, the parking demand study focuses on the portions of the building occupied by employees that need to travel to and from the site daily. The study removes all unoccupied areas of the building from the parking calculations, including storage areas, hallways, corridors. So it's a net rather than a gross, which is typical, which is the opposite of the way we do it now. And the study also applies travel demand management options provided to employees who will occupy the building to use active modes of transportation. So let's remember that the Downtown Connection Center is really in support of Mountain Line, which is our local transit agency. And many, if not most, of those employees are using these active modes of transportation rather than driving vehicles to and from the site. It does not mean, however, that there will be never, there will never be a necessity for somebody to drive to and from the site, and we recognize that. So in reality, utilizing these techniques, we've been able to reduce the total amount of parking required based on this parking demand study to about 15 spaces. All 15 required parking spaces will need to be provided within the existing paid parking areas located on-site and currently managed by Park Flag. So those are all those parking spaces that currently exist. They will not be altered, reconstructed until Phase Two, but they will serve during the Phase One, after Phase One construction is complete. And then, until Phase Two is able to go, which would be again, after the Rio de Flag is completed. A separate agreement between Mountain Line and the City of Flagstaff will need to be completed in order to allow the use of these spaces for the Downtown Connection Center. This is pretty common. And in our zoning code, we do allow other properties to do this. It's called shared parking, especially between uses that probably have different demand on parking. So, again, a separate agreement will need to be put into play and if there is a cost, that will be worked out at a later date. Essentially, what this parking demand study is just doing is saying we're good that 15 spaces is the requirement. And it's going to let Mountain Line and the City of Flagstaff establish how those 15 spaces are provided. So, today, for this parking demand study, this is the first one you're ever seeing. So if you have questions, the applicant is here. The applicant's engineer is also available for questions if necessary. So you have multiple options before you. You can approve the parking demand study as presented. You can approve the parking demand study with conditions. Or you can deny the parking demand study and we can go back to the standard code provisions as stated earlier. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy, just so you know, we do have one public participant, so we'll have saved discussion for after, but any questions are welcome now.
Okay, I think this is appropriate for now. Just for the record, I want to see if my interpretation of this is correct. They will provide, they shall provide, at least 15 parking places. That's in effect what we're agreeing to if we approve the study. Is that correct?
They shall provide or obtain access to 15 parking spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Can you just confirm, maybe go back to the concept plan and just confirm for me where the parking spaces will be?
So, currently, this plan is not showing you the existing set of conditions. But the Bus Plaza area that currently exists is a much smaller portion, sort of half of this area that you see now. The lot you see over on the corner at Beaver and Phoenix is existing, and this represents the parking as it exists. But there's a large, there's an RV parking lot, and then there's a larger parking lot that consists now on the other half. Right now, those 15 spaces are proposed to come out of that paid parking area.
Alright, thank you. We will go to, yeah, Deborah Harris. Would like to come up.
And the applicant is here as well. I don't know if they have a presentation that they'll make as well.
Do you have a presentation as well to give? Okay, my apologies, Ms. Harris. I was not aware.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. I'm Heather Domlin. I'm the CEO and General Manager for Mountain Line Transit. Thank you for allowing us to present to you today on Mountain Line's Downtown Connections Center project. It's been several months since we've been here and we're very glad to be back. As we've mentioned in the past, the Downtown Connections Center is our highest priority project due to its positive impact on our services and our riders. We obtained a $17 million federal grant for this project. Excuse me, and we remain committed to bringing an asset to the downtown area that highlights Transit as a partner in the community, to the community and the goals of sustainability and affordability. Transit is a key link for many in connecting to jobs, education, and services. And we appreciate the partnership of the city in bringing our vision to life in this area. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kate Morley. She's going to talk a little bit more about the details of our project.
Thank you, mayor and council. Kate Morley, Deputy General Manager at Mountain Line. Heather talked a little bit about our vision for this Connection Center, but it is really our number-one capital improvement project that we've been looking to do since we received our first grant in 2017 and subsequent grants since then. And I know I've been in front of you before talking about the reasons why we need this Connection Center. I think they're highlighted here in terms of our growth since 2008 and we first located on this site. And I think another key piece that isn't necessarily represented is we hope to continue to grow in this way in the future. We just heard the updates to the regional plan regarding carbon neutrality and growing your transit system is going to be part of that. We've really maxed out the capacity on that site. If you've driven on Phoenix Avenue with the buses, if you've tried to maneuver in the parking lot with the buses. And in order to grow, we need the capacity to be here. So we've done a bunch of public outreach over the past several years, actually, including 14 publicly noticed meetings and held meetings with the Mountain Line board, multiple surveys on the Flagstaff Community Forum, virtual meetings during the era of COVID. And we even formed a stakeholders working group involved, involving Southside Community, La Plaza Vieja, DVA, Chambers, to try to bring everyone together and talk through different design iterations with us. And in our last survey of the Flagstaff Community Forum, 67% of people really liked the design of the proposed building and aesthetics that are in front of you. So we're excited to have that kind of support. You can see specific comments that we pulled out from some of that information, but that felt really good to us. We know how hard it is to design a building, but everybody loves the aesthetics of it. And 78% were supportive of the site plan concept that we're taking to Planning and Zoning Commission. So we think that those are really good numbers for supporting the project overall. Tiffany showed you this space with a little bit about it. It's got 13 bus bays. We currently have 10 on a good day. We buy spaces from Park Flag on occasion, actually, to park additional buses down there. This gives us the opportunity to just be flexible. We've talked about an opportunity to extend a route to a new northern Arizona healthcare facility. Currently, we wouldn't have a spot to park that bus. This would give us opportunity to implement new routes like that. A kiss-and-ride drop-off area so that people can let their kids off and then continue on their way, or a spouse off or partner off along the way. Our administration services would move down here, and importantly, customer service, which now people have to go out to our headquarters on Caspar for. Our vision is really that this is a multimodal hub. There's a foots trail connection going through the site. We're excited to bring in great pedestrian connectivity. We're hoping for a light on Milton if we can get that approved by ADOT, which would connect to La Plaza Vieja, which would be important for us, for pedestrians, in addition to bus safety on that one. You see civic amenities. We've looked at all the planning documents and designing this site and trying to bring forward the desires of the Southside. And then, of course, underlying everything in the design is compatibility with the Rio de Flag, and that is driving a lot of the way the site is laid out in front of you. And this is, we wanted to show some elevations because they're exciting and fun to show, but you can see lots of windows, natural wood. And then the stone is meant to mimic a variety of natural stones instead of a solid repeating pattern. We've thought a lot about what this looks like coming into downtown from Milton at a request of the downtown businesses. So even though this is the back of house, we've put a nice staircase up there. We've put community rooms out there to try to make it not look like the back of house to people on Milton. We've worked hard on some of the civic space concepts, flowing from more of a hardscape civic space, we've heard the desire for festivals, into more of the natural landscape where there is some channel there that could be recognized as part of the Rio de Flag even though just surface flows. So we're excited to advance some of the designs with the community as we move forward. Initial rendering of how that kind of changes from hardscape over, but lots of design to be done in the details, just ideas here. And then in terms of parking, since that's why we're here in front of you today, we really believe that the site is a good balance of all the things that we've asked, that we've heard from the community. There's desire for civic space, desire for parking, and then the needs of Mountain Line to make an efficient transportation center. We do think that this is a really good balance of all those uses. We, the council, the study presented by staff and supported by staff recommends 15 spaces dedicated to Mountain Line uses. As Mountain Line, we're willing to go to zero, and that's because we believe that all the inventory for parking that exists should be to the benefit of Park Flag. And so are happy to pay Park Flag fees to park in these spots. We don't need them to be dedicated to Mountain Line in any way, shape, or form. We have developed a transportation demand management policy, TDM policy, to reduce trips to the work site. As Tiffany mentioned, many of our employees start at Caspar because they have to pick up a bus to start their day or drop it off. But for those that do work out of this site, we'll pay them for their travel time on the bus downtown. They can start their day riding. We'll have bikes available for staff. So a lot of things we want to do to try to reduce trips to the work site and live the ethic that Mountain Line's trying to deliver to this community. But also, we also believe that that allows the benefit of all this, all the opportunity for parking on the site to be to the benefit of Park Flag. And it allows Mountain Line to be in the business of transit and Park Flag to be in the business of parking, which we think is the right mix of uses or the right use of everyone's talents and expertise. So, we have heard a recent concern from the Southside community about this in terms of not wanting employees to end up parking on side streets. And so we recognize and hear that concern and are happy to monitor and ensure that that doesn't happen. The expectation would be employees needed to come downtown, that they would use the Park Flag lots. We've talked with Park Flag. There could be ways to monitor that through license plates. We could register license plates. But more than that, we're not a very big organization of administrative staff at Mountain Line. And there'd probably only be about 30 of us at the work site, and we think we can just message to people and ensure that they know that those are the expectations and the follow-through that we want for Mountain Line employees down there. So we're happy to continue the dialogue with Southside to make sure that it's going well for them as they move forward. And then fundamentally, we support paid parking programs. This is something that we are always pushing with businesses to try to advance their climate action and multimodalism. Paid parking programs are shown to reduce trips and encourage mode shift. And that is what we are here as Mountain Line to try to encourage the community to do. And so we want to live what we preach to others, and so have the proposal in front of you as well. A little bit about our schedule to end this up. We have obviously Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow. If that goes well, then we'll move forward with our NEPA process, the environmental process required for the use of the federal funds. If all, if we can get all that going in a perfect timeline, hopefully we'll be back for an intergovernmental agreement to sign between Mountain Line and the City Council, April, May-ish, if we can pull that off, and then start to demo the building that's there and phase some development to really get that moving. Getting the building going is a big deal for us right now with costs escalating related to construction. We are anxious to get Phase One going, as Tiffany mentioned. So there's more information if anyone on the line wants to figure out how to contact us or if council wants to find more, but we're happy to answer any questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shemoni?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Kate and Heather, for being here and your efforts, great presentation, and very exciting seeing the slides and the images of the DCC. So Kate, you mentioned the 15 spots being totally facilitated and overseen by Park Flag. And you were saying that you were happy to see Mountain Line propose zero spots. That's different than what's being discussed tonight, though, correct?
I'd have to confirm with Tiffany if she feels like that's aligned. I think in our perspective, we think that Mountain Line employees should pay to... I think in our perspective, we think that Mountain Line employees should pay to park, that retains as many spaces for Park Flag as possible. Mountain Line employees should pay Park Flag if they want to park down there, and it also means that those spaces are used by Park Flag, or outside of Mountain Line's normal operating hours, like 8 to 5 when people might be there, that they'd still be Park Flag spaces. So if we wanted to designate specific spots that were where the employees would park if they were to use those spaces, I think that's fine, but we'd also be happy to share them with members of the public if that was the requirement. And Kate and I are saying the exact same thing. She just uses a lot better words than I do.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you were almost proposing something different, Kate, but it sounds like it is in line with what Tiffany spoke to earlier.
Yeah, I think that works, yes.
Okay, great. I just want to say I really appreciate reading through the different transit and bike amenities, and I thought it was really interesting that Mountain Line's talking about paying employees for their travel time.
To use the bus, or, yeah, because, I mean, it is, we all know, we don't have to be in an office anymore to work, right? So I can begin my, I do this already. I begin my day riding the bus over to Mountain Line, checking my email and responding to things, and there's no reason that we can't make that, you know, more of an established policy that allows that for employees, especially the administrative employees who will work out of the building.
Yeah, I don't know how many employers do that, but I think that's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember McCarthy?
Just for further clarification, I'll create a hypothetical. Say a person wanted to bypasses or whatever you do to ride on mountain lift, because I think they pay ahead or something, I'm not sure, and they came to your facility, this new Downtown Connections Center. Would they get free parking, or would they have to pay, just like if they were parking on the street in downtown?
Yeah, that's a great question. So if you look at the site plan just south of the building, there's five what we're calling convenient spaces there. And the discussion has been that those would be managed by Park Flag as short-term spaces, but there's two ADA spaces that would be there because we do want those to be more proximate to the building than some of the other parking. And then the other spaces could be free 15-minute loading drop-off zones or could be managed with meters. I think we'd really defer to the expertise of Park Flag for how they wanted to do that. But generally, customers would need to, yeah, use the Park Flag program to access the building, be it through 15-minute, you know, loading and unloading zones or through the longer, you know, the bigger lot if they wanted to stay for longer.
So these five spaces that are on the street, on Phoenix Avenue, I believe it is, would they be on the north side of the street so that if an ADA person wouldn't have to go jaywalk across, or jayroll in their wheelchair across the street?
That is our proposal, I should say. It is all subject to approval of a TIA by ADOT as a part of the intersection improvement requirements, so, but yes, our ideal is to keep those spots as close to the building as possible. The other potential user is the building still does have a police substation in it, so the police may also want to use those spaces on a regular basis for parking vehicles rather than further away. But yeah, that's, if I can get it through ADOT, they'll be on the north side.
So you would be providing five spaces, and anything beyond that, people would have to pay parking?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that to the rest of the council, because that's a little different than like if you go to Target, they have free parking there on-site.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm not seeing any other questions from council at this time, so thank you so much. And Ms. Harris, if you'd like to come up, that would be great.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Vice Mayor Daggett. I'm back here again, and I will be coming back every time this subject comes up, so I just want to warn you all, but thank you for taking the time to listen to me. So what I want to do is I want to encourage council to look hard at not giving up any civic space in this project for parking. I would encourage us to look at how we can work with, with Mountain Line and with any other organization, hotels or whatever, to get tourists to the downtown area, because I know that that's a big concern for the businesses there. And we all understand that businesses need to have people to shop to maintain their business. We get it, we're not stupid. But I think that there are other things that we can do besides putting parking in that area. And so I want to encourage you to kind of think outside of the box a little bit and think about how we can manage that area. We keep talking about carbon neutrality. We just had a presentation. We want to lower all of the stuff that's in the air from cars, and we can't do that if we keep doing parking. If every time we have a project, we're talking about how many parking spaces. And so I just want you all to, to do that. The other thing that I also want is that people have been saying during this project, oh, we'll come back in a few years and we'll put more civic space in. Well, we all know that when those promises are made like that, we'd never come back and do it. We'd never come back and do it. And so let's do it in the front end and not do it, have to come back later and do it on the back end. And then the community starts to distrust our council, because you promised something and then you reneg on the promise. And that's not what we want to do. We don't want to be known as a community council that does that. And so think, think hard about how we can do this. We've got great staff in Flight Staff. We have great staff at City Hall, and they are really smart people, and they can figure out how to help us manage this. And so I would ask you to please think about not adding any parking spaces or parking garages, but let's think about how we turn that space into civic space so that it can be an enjoyable place for all of us. It's not just Southside, but for all of us to enjoy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And there's an individual tapping in online?
Yes, Ms. Terry McDeska, could you please go ahead?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to offer a little comment on the DCC as well. You know, I think civic space is really important. It's called for in the downtown vision. It's something that we all want to see. I'm not sure that having civic space surrounded by buses and cars and trains is ideal, and I think that at this time, one of the things we need to think about, and I know it's not, you know, the most, you know, well-loved concept right now, but parking is infrastructure. It is infrastructure for our employees. It is infrastructure for our visitors, for tourists that come by buses, and this is the only parking we have on the Southside. And without having that necessary infrastructure, these cars are going to park, and they're going to park in the neighborhoods. And so at least for right now, I think that staff has worked really hard to come up with a compromise, and it's a good one. We have a new Downtown Connections Center, which is well-thought-out. We have some civic space, and there's parking, so I think the compromise is a good one. It checks all the boxes and meets the needs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I believe that's, City Manager, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I usually don't weigh in on these things, but I've been pretty closely involved in this one, so I'm going to go ahead and offer some comments. I do so with the utmost respect for Ms. Deb Harris, and she and I have had many conversations on this, and I think we know and respect where each other stand on this issue. I consider her a good friend. The parking exists right now. There's no conversion of civic space to parking. It's actually just the opposite. There's no civic space there now. There's 175 spaces approximately of parking. Really, what's on the table is seeing a good part of that parking converted to other uses, and we endorse that, and we endorse it in the compromised fashion that is, has been shown here and has been very well-vetted. I'll bring council back to a meeting that occurred at the dais last spring when this matter first was broached, and after considerable discussion, I offered up a compromise, and it was articulated in a memo, and if you dig deep, you'll find that in your records. But the contents of that spelled out a compromise whereby the city would retain some parking, a fraction of what's there now, a small fraction, frankly, and maybe have the opportunity to do a structure at some point in the future that would not encumber the civic space nor the DCC facility. It would be at considerable cost to the city. All we wanted to do was retain the right and the space to do that at some point if there's a desire to do it. Why do we do that? Because we know that parking is infrastructure. It is, it has been, and it will be for the foreseeable future. And while we all have our ideals about what should happen with vehicular traffic, I'm fairly confident that cars will be around in our lifetimes. It might transform in terms of how they're driven and how they're energized, but they will be on our streets, and they will certainly occupy our parking spaces. So I think this is a very realistic compromise, and it's one that puts a burden on the city, and we do give up a lot of parking in the immediacy. And we're doing that, frankly, because we see the value of the civic space that is shown. So I think the compromise is there. I think, I'd like to point out, on the point of parking being infrastructure, I'll add to that comment, it's not cheap infrastructure. If council recalls a discussion that occurred at this dais two weeks ago, we had costs associated with a facility that represents a public-private partnership, that being the foundation for senior living. The city's partnership on that is to purchase at considerable price structured parking to serve our new courthouse and some public needs. That cost, if you recall, was in the approximate area of $5 million. That's the city's cost. We're budgeting for that. We think we'll get about 100 spaces. So if you do some quick math, we're talking $50,000 a space for parking in proximity to our downtown core. So keep that number in mind as we talk about dispensing of existing parking. I know surface parking is not structured parking, but frankly, this site plan here is predicated upon a future structure, so that you can expect that to be the expenditure that the city will lay out if we endeavor to build structured parking. That is the cost of the infrastructure that is at hand. So it's not something we can lightly let go of or reduce. It's something that we need to zealously guard as important infrastructure for our downtown corridor. Our next comment is, the parking on this site also, in my opinion, lends itself to a good park-and-ride concept that can go quite well with the Downtown Connections Center, connecting multimodal and transit transportation users who might be incentivized to park their cars and ride a bus and pursue other means to access the downtown area and the community as a whole. I think we've made some huge strides in retaining parking. The most recent one occurred with the raising of the old courthouse building in what is now a pretty nice parking lot with 50 spaces, again, at considerable cost. Thank you to the Capital Projects team for helping us realize that project before the snow flies, which may be occurring this week. It's very important that we did that. We, we made great strides to accelerate that project so that we would have parking in the downtown core this winter. That was not circumstance. That was a very deliberate endeavor. So I'll close with a comment about the Southside and the impact that reduced parking in this area, and Terry alluded to it, could have in our neighborhood out there. And we've heard these complaints before, and they've been real, and they've been very vocalized. The more we reduce what is the only public parking lot in this area, which, by the way, has also served as winter overflow parking during snow events, the more we will push parking demands out onto the side streets. And then we'll be hearing other complaints from our residents out there about the scarcity of parking. So this is, infrastructure is needed infrastructure. There's been compromise. It's been well-vetted, and we think it's a good deal all around. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Council? Councilmember McCarthy?
Kate Morley, I have a couple of questions for you. And leave that slide up. So if I understand correctly, on the very west end, there's some trees. That'll be kind of an open area. Will there be any, you know, seats or anything over there for people?
Over on the Milton side?
Yes.
That is definitely possible. We haven't talked about having many amenities over there because it's kind of a noisy spot over on Milton, but I think as we go through final design, if that's of interest, we could definitely do that. We have focused on trying to make it a nice connection to La Plaza Vieja, so people think about using that, but hadn't thought about, like, seating itself.
And then on the east end, which is next to Beaver, if I correct, read this correctly, there's one row of parking, and then along the railroad track, that'll all be parking for the foreseeable future. And then in the more distant future, that's where we may have a parking garage if we can find the money. That's kind of my understanding of what I see. Do I have it pretty much straight?
Yeah, that's pretty good. I could add a little to the fate, because it is phasing, so it's confusing. So while we get the building up, we don't actually touch any of the existing parking. So that parking remains really until the Rio de flag project comes in. And then during that portion of time, there could obviously be very limited parking while the Rio de flag is being constructed, except that western lot is saved because that's outside of the boundaries, and so that's one of the reasons that that's not proposed to change. Depending on how the Army Corps structures staging, the replacement of parking or ability to add some of these uses in may be also in a little bit of a staggered phase, but, so it's a little nuanced, all dependent upon the Army Corps, but we will get it in as soon as possible.
So eventually, there will be parking over the Rio de flag in this area, is that correct?
In terms of the garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the purple box is the outline of where we believe a parking garage is feasible based on the current Rio de flag easement. So if, right now, the Rio de flag easements swipe through the property in like a big U, and they don't allow vertical development to go in over the top, so our engineers haven't really engineered the whole garage, but they've looked at how big footers would have to be and where they could go down to support a garage outside of those easements, and that box is what's available. If those easements were ever to change, then the garage could expand. So if at some day in the future, the Rio de flag easements allowed vertical development over them, Mountain Line doesn't have an issue with a parking garage being over the bus bays.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Shumani?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll jump in next. First of all, I'd like to commend both yourself and Mountain Line and Heather for your work on this. I really appreciate the TDM strategies that were outlined. I do want to just highlight a couple of things. Transit passes will not only be provided to staff of Mountain Line but to family as well as one non-family member, and I just think that's so great that we're expanding this. There's a ripple effect to working for Mountain Line and its impact on our streets and corridors. Proximity transit is highlighted as well with the DCC, and then there's talk of two different park-and-ride opportunities for employees, one at the current location on the east side and then the one that, that we're going to figure out on the west side. And to City Manager's points, I do wonder with park-and-rides, you know, before we get to the day where we're building a, you know, garage, which I'm not opposed to fully, I see the value and I see the compromise, and I appreciate the hard work that has gone into this. But I do wonder, you know, in the next handful of years, how much we can alleviate from the parking need through park-and-rides. You know, I know other towns do it. I love how Boulder has removed parking or cars from a lot of their central areas, and we can point to numerous communities. But I think the park-and-ride bullet point here is really nice and effective. The bike amenities are great. Bike reimbursement program for employees committed to commuting at least 50% of the year, that's so cool. And then share, a shared bike program, both bikes and e-bikes along with scooters for checkout midday for employees, and they can take it out overnight, so that can really help for that first last mile. So I really think that the plan in place for TDM strategies is going to be successful here. I'm really curious to see how it plays out, and also the way you mentioned monitoring those, those employees in the Southside and in the neighborhoods to ensure that they're not just taking up another spot on the street. But I just think that this is so great, and this is what I'd like to see more of. But I just think that this is so great and this is what I'd like to see more of by efforts moving forward in the city. I think that the plan, I think that, you know, the civic space component is a really important one and I appreciate Ms. Harris for being here and speaking up on this continuously. And, you know, to Ms. Medeska's point, I think a civic space, wherever it might be, regardless of if it's adjacent to buses or trains, if it's what the kids in the community has access to, they will love and appreciate what they can get, you know? So just, just wanted to share that with council. This might not be an ideal spot for civic space because of its adjacent, like proximity to other things, but you know, as a child growing up in that neighborhood, if it's within walking distance, I guarantee you that child's going to appreciate what is there for them. And same with the community adjacent. So I fully support the civic space being built here and us following through on those promises. And lastly, I just, I'd support this agenda item moving forward, the request for parking demand study as presented. And does that require a motion? I'm not saying I'm going to make it now, but I'm happy to when it is appropriate.
I do believe so, but that would be a Stacey or Sterling question to just verify.
That is correct. We will need a motion on that.
Okay.
So those are my comments for now. Very excited about these plans and excited to see this shift in the big shifts we keep talking about in real time through this agenda item. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember McCarthy?
A few minutes ago, I spoke about the parking. I also, I think I forgot to bring it up, or if I did, twice is better than not. So on the east end, where I see green, that's all going to be some kind of civic space, right? So if Mr. Shumoni makes a motion, I'll second it.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to say that I think that this is going to be a beautiful addition and I'm excited to see that first building built. I think, I think you're right, coming down Milton, that's going to be such a better view than what is currently there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll just say that I think we, I really like this plan. I think it checks a lot of boxes and you've done very well in your due diligence to include the voices at the table. I'll just say though, that I really want us to make sure we're following through on our promise with the civic space, that that is part of the real planning early on so that way we can figure out budgetarily and so forth, that that is going to be, you know, that we have the plan in place, it's not just some dream. So I'm definitely in support of this plan, just wanted to put that plug in for, make sure that we follow through. So with that, I think there might be somebody with a motion around here.
I, I would like to go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that the City Council approve the parking demand study as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. All right, we are now down to agenda item 13E, and that is the consideration, oh, 13F. Sorry, I'm looking at my old agenda before it got added. 13F, consideration and a possible approval. Deviate from existing out-of-city limits, water policy, and offer water service in exchange for acquiring easements rather than purchase property rights for water line easements for areas adjacent and surrounding phases four and five of the Switzer Canyon Water Transmission Main Project, or not deviate from policy, not offer water service, and move forward with purchase of property rights for water line easements. Staff recommended action is to accept the Water Commission's recommendation not to deviate from policy, not to offer water service in exchange for property rights, and to move forward with purchase of property rights for water line easements outside city limits along the Switzer Canyon Water Main Transmission Project Phase Four and Five. Whew. Now it's your time to talk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Aaron Young, Water Resources Manager. I'll be presenting on behalf of Water Services tonight. And before I get going, I'd like to offer Trevor Henry some words, providing an update on this project to you.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. Trevor Henry with Capital Improvements. So before we get into the main discussion of the item, I just wanted to give you an update on the design and real estate. So the City of Flagstaff has planned and programmed a new transmission main system that will serve the city, and that begins from Route 66 in Switzer Canyon and goes all the way up to the city reservoirs, which is near Schultz Road Pass. This system will replace an existing main that was installed in 1950. This is a backbone transmission main system and it is essential to the overall system for the city. The transmission main system has been planned in five phases. Phases one through three are complete and phase four and five are in design. Phase four and five will include a 16-inch main and a 24-inch main. The total length of phase four and five is about a little over two miles. Phase four will begin at the Elks Lodge and then run north and end at Quintana Drive. And then phase five will pick up from there and finish at the reservoirs. Phase four is approximately 90% complete with the design and phase five is still in the early stages, we're about 30%. Phase four is planned for construction in 2023 and phase five will come later, possibly in 2024. Appraisals have been received for properties that are adjacent to phase four. Staff expects to extend offers to those property owners very soon. And with regards to phase five, we're still reviewing the property rights and appraisal process. So that is a really quick, brief update on the design and real estate, and I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. The background on the policy side, this item was in front of City Council in 2019 in two meetings. Council authorized the acquisition of real property in that meeting for both phases. And council requested staff explore exchanging or offering water services to offset land acquisition costs. Staff have, we've performed our due diligence and we're bringing forward the results of that tonight and a recommendation. Following our city council meeting, staff did present this to the Water Commission. And our city code and our water policy does require any person outside city limits to apply to the Commission for Water Service. Staff made the recommendation to provide water service for these residents at that time. With conditions outlined in a non-annexation type agreement, water policy does require pre-annexation or annexation of the properties. And this would be in exchange for or to offset the costs of acquisition. And in that meeting with City Council and the Water Commission, staff would seek appraisals of the property rights needed in order to have grounds for negotiating with the property owners to offset the costs and fees. Since that meeting with the Water Commission, we've received new information, including the appraisal estimates, $48,000 for permanent easements and $94,000 for temporary easements. And to give perspective, the total project cost is 1.7 million for phase four, so approximately 10% would be for land acquisition. The costs of acquisition varied for each parcel. Staff did talk with property owners. Adjacent properties, part of the HOA, did request water service as well. And staff discovered there's no policy. I mean, we knew there was no policy for providing in exchange for water services, for water service. So we found it difficult to find a fair and equitable method for trading or providing water service in exchange for the property. And not all property owners responded when staff was seeking whether they'd want water service or not. So staff concerns that have come up, as I mentioned, it's difficult to determine an exchange value in an equitable and fair manner. Not all property owners responded. The design was to provide four stubouts from the transmission main with a hydrant and a cluster of water meters. That would require some property owners to cross adjacent properties to get to the water meter. That's, that's against our, our water policy. That was by far the cheapest way to provide a design for access versus providing a whole distribution line system. That would be much more expensive. The water service agreement would bind the property owners to a certain meter size or a number of meters per acre. This would set precedent to offer water service in exchange for property on all water line replacement projects that cross county properties. That's a concern. And this potentially sets the precedent to design and construct stubouts on all future transmission main projects for water meters. Additionally, if we were to design these stubouts and manifolds, they are points of potential leakage, which we, we want to avoid unless there's a maintenance and operation benefit to those connection points or valves. So tonight's question, does council wish to provide out-of-city limits water service in exchange for easement rights? The staff recommendation is to follow the Water Commission recommendation that was last, from last month, which is not to deviate from policy, not to offer water service in exchange for real property, and move forward with purchase of real property needed for water line easements in this area. And with that, we are here for questions.
Thank you. And do I see that we have a public participant online? All right.
Yes.
Let's take that before we go into discussion.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Jeff Downard?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
You may go ahead.
Yes, I want to thank City Council and staff for the enable me to speak tonight. I am representing the Homeowners Association that's at the southern portion of this project. It's where North San Francisco Street extends until its termination. In that area, there are approximately 20, 25-plus houses that could be built. At present, there are considerably fewer. But what we have done over two years is to work in a collaborative way with city engineers, with the engineers that have been consulted for the project, which is Turner Engineering, and with city staff. We've tried to provide information and I do believe that there is a fundamental misunderstanding. I made the proposal to City Council in 2019 and the proposal was not simply to do an exchange. The proposal was, City Council would go forward with its normal procedure to provide appraisals for the property that would be acquired through the easement, and then owners that would seek to get access to the water would pay for that access to the water. And that if there was a opportunity, the price of one could be subtracted from the other, but would not be a simple exchange. We understand the legal problems with that. But I'm here to answer questions and to enter into the record, I have a letter that was written by the president of the association. If you have a copy before that, before you, of that letter, I won't try to read it in, but if you don't, I would like to read it in before you vote on the matter. Do you have a copy before you?
I don't believe so. I can check here, but I don't believe that was within the engine packet.
Well, okay. This is a letter that was composed with input from all the property owners in this first property owner area, which is the, probably the largest portion of the extension before it crosses over into an area called Lockett Ranches. And so this is from Dave Beamer compiling these, these comments. Well over two years ago, the Wildcat Ridge Property Owners Association became aware of a major City of Flagstaff water line project, which was being planned through the middle of our pristine valley. The city has no existing easements which would allow them to complete the project and some reactions were they should find another route. After an owners' meeting to discuss the project and the significantly negative impact to our area, we decided as an association that it was better to work collaboratively and constructively with the city as opposed to resisting the project. Given that, our association has some reasonable concerns about the project and the disruption damage it would cause to our natural metal road and adjacent properties. To address that, the association documented our concerns and possible mitigations to city staff as well as presented them to City Council at regular scheduled meetings.
Jeff, sorry, what else does the letter have to say?
It's two and a half paragraphs long. Would you like me to continue or not?
Please do so.
Yes. During this time, we enjoyed a positive working relationship with folks in various city departments. Given the disruption the city project will cause, a major part of our association's request was that property owners should be allowed to access water as paying customers since it was crossing directly through the middle of our neighborhood. We strongly feel it was a very reasonable request, with the mayor and city council agreeing over two years ago in the meeting, and thus asking its department heads to determine how the request could be addressed. Since then, we have been consistent in our request, we continue working with departments but experienced challenges due to significant turnover in departments. Unfortunately, we recently heard that the recommendation being presented tonight, that is disappointing. We hope from the beginning, and still hope to form an agreement, that allows our property owners access to water as paying customers. Again, as an association feel, we feel that this is a reasonable request, given the significant disruption to our valiant residents. The city is now presenting us with another path to access water via the creation of special water district with the county, which is an involved process and would ultimately require City of Water Department and City of Flagstaff to approve. We're open to exploring this, but ultimately require a written agreement by the city departments that we would, that they would support and approve a plan to allow access to water by the residents. We think this is a reasonable and fair, given substantial impact on this project proposed to our valley. In my own personal view, I know that we would not be prepared to accept or to grant easements to the city unless that kind of agreement could be made to provide water under one process or the other. We're, we're open to either process, but we don't want to slow down the city construction project. And so we would hope to get a statement from City Council directing staff to work with us so we could form an agreement quickly so we wouldn't be delaying the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shumoni has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Jeff. Good evening. Thank you for your public comment and reading that letter. Can you, can you just read that one portion one more time of your request from the City Council?
The request is to, whatever process is followed, whether it is what we initially proposed to City Council and City Council-directed staff to follow in 2019, or the option of going through a water district through the county, whatever process, we would ask for a written agreement that we would have approval before we will grant the easements. We understand the city has the power to take those easements, but that will be a fairly long and drawn-out process. We would rather work collaboratively. We're simply asking that we be able to work with city staff to get those agreements in place as quickly as possible, one way or the other, so we can grant the easements in a collaborative way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? All right, we do have another, oh, Vice Mayor?
None of the speaker.
Well, we have one more public participant and then we can go to questions for staff.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mark McCormick?
Councilmember, thank you. I have a property at the end of phase four on Quintana, and at the end of the phase, it's going to propose to cross directly across my property. They're going to dig the ditch, going to lay the pipe, and I'm They're going to dig the ditch, going to lay the pipe, and I'm going to be willing to give you that access. And then you're going to close it up and tell me I can't tap on to it. It just seems silly that you have a need and I have a need that government can't work together. And so I would just ask as an individual that you would still consider these possibilities for a tap on a case by case basis. I'm limited, I have five and a third acres, I can't split it, I just need one tap, and then obviously I can move forward with the process of what I have planned building a house on that lot. But I've been in limbo, my choices are then if, if I can't, I'm going to have to sink a well, and you're going to go right through my property and the water is just sitting. There's no better time or place to put in a tap. I heard that, yeah, we don't want to put in taps because of the chance to leak each, but then you're going to allow the county to possibly do that in the future. Well, there is not going to be a better or easier time than to look at that and allow that to happen for individuals to be able to utilize what you're taking from them is that to give and take a little bit from the, from this process. Only ask you to reconsider by case by case. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that ends our public participation. Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you. Erin, I have a couple of questions for you. Do we know how many of the parcels that we're talking about can be split from what they currently are?
Vice Mayor Daggett, members of the council, Andy Bertelson, interim water services director. We don't have a number of that, and, but we do notice that when you look at the properties impacted, based on the number that could, the acreage and then the, the county zoning, it is in Coconino County jurisdiction, some of those properties could be split. We don't have a number on that, but it's a significant number that could be as that line progresses through the neighborhood and ultimately to the plant. So we can look up that number for you. I think Trevor has some drawings. I don't know if we can get it for you right now in this meeting, but we'll definitely get it for you.
Thank you. And Erin, you had talked about the, some of the infrastructure needing to cross certain properties to enter into another property. Do we know the, who gets, who would need to get the permission to do that? Who pays for the easement? What, what's that process?
Vice Mayor Daggett, I'm sorry, council, or mayor and vice mayor Daggett. Our city policy actually requires a parcel to butt up against the water distribution line, which is different from the water transmission main. We don't allow a parcel or a meter to tap a transmission main. And then, so we were designing these stub outs off the transmission main that property owners would have to connect to across other properties. We don't know how that process would work for those property owners. I understand it would be between neighbors to...
So, yeah, Vice Mayor Daggett, members of the council, just from experience with Coconino County, it's kind of what's called a, a wildcat subdivision to what, and so you have property splits and then easements are granted or not. If the easement isn't granted, then you're essentially landlocked, and you can be landlocked from the transportation network, a road, or utilities, whether it be an APS line, a unisource line, or in this case, a water line. So those types of actions could happen. We would have no regulatory authority over that. And I think that's where the fair and equitable discussion comes into play, to where there's a water line, and if there's a lot split and someone would like access to it, unless the property owner that butts up against, for lack of a better term, that water line allows for that access, and there's a negotiated agreement between those property owners, then that person or those property owners are essentially landlocked from that service, and in this case, water. I hope that makes sense.
It does, thank you. And what would be the process? How would these county residents contribute toward maintenance of this infrastructure? I mean, I understand how it's done within the city limits, but how would it be done with county residents?
So Vice Mayor Daggett, mayor, members of the council, that's where the concept or notion of the district has come into play, in that special districts can be formed, whether it's a special maintenance district. You may remember years ago, Kachina and Mount Nair, for example, weren't paved, this is a case of a roadway, right? And so the residents of those areas formed a special district for the pavement of those particular communities and were assessed themselves a special assessment. And if, in, in essence, that kind of became their local form of government. So as one of the speakers had noted, government to government, we the city, the government, in negotiation with individual property owners, that becomes a bit more difficult as you have several, and how is that fair and equitable between each of those property owners versus the formation of some sort of district or association? And maybe it could even be a homeowners association that then becomes a district. That, that process, as Mr. Downard had noted, just in my experience in the county, can be a bit cumbersome because it's essentially people coming together to form a union or a district. But that would allow we the city to have contact with that one entity, and then that can allow for that fair and equitable distribution that, that has been discussed.
May, may I add to that? And, and on the, the maintenance on the city side, the customers would be paying an out of city water service fee every month, and that contributes to the, the pool of money for operation and maintenance.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. Andy and Erin, quick question for you. So if this HOA were to go about creating a special water district, listening to what Mr. Downard said about a written agreement for approval from the city, can you comment to that?
I can, and, and Erin, please kick me if I'm wrong, and same with the city manager, Clifton. We, we talk about deviation from policy, if you will. In terms of we the city working with those individual property owners, that becomes a bit more difficult. But if the council chose to work with those property owners in some way, that would, that would be the best way to go about it. What do I mean by that, that way? Working with a coalition or a group in which they would represent themselves as some sort of quasi-governmental entity, if you will, and us, we the city, working directly with that represented group. So if the council chose to approach it in that way, that would be probably the most favorable way to do it from a staff perspective.
And Andy, just for clarification, I'm a little confused by your response, just in, I guess, are you saying like a written agreement for approval? So is that like when they get established and they get organized and they approach us, that's when we, that's when we would then submit a written agreement?
Oh, yes, yes. Or if the, there are options with that, and now I might be getting myself into legal trouble, but if the entity was choosing to go down that path, we could agree to have those discussions with them at that time.
I think city attorney might want to chomp, chime in here.
No, actually, county, mayor, council, water services director Bertelson has hit right on the, on the proper procedure here. If a, a district, which was referred to earlier, was created, and they would have to work with the county to do that, but it would be a water district essentially, and it would be much easier for the city to negotiate, work with such a quasi-governmental entity. They are formed under Title 48, there's no legal advice there. I'm just simply pointing out where water service districts are created under Arizona state law, and that would be an easier way to work through it, in my opinion.
Thank you, Sterling. And Sarah Decter, do you want to help address councilmember Shimonie's question?
Yes, I'd just like to add a detail to, to respond to what policies are actually in place about this and why. One of the key policies is that this area is outside our urban growth boundary. It's not just that it's in the county, but it's outside of the area we had planned to serve with our 100-year water supply, which we analyze as part of the regional plan update, which we are about to begin again. The reason is precisely the things that Erin and Andy are doing such a good job of explaining, which is the regulation of the land uses and how many people are out there consuming water, and how many households are consuming water, and what they're consuming water for, is outside the control of the city in an area such as this. And so if we don't have agreement with the county on how that area will be regulated for future growth, and we provide a meter, it really does start to get well outside of our long-term planning for our water supply as a city. And that's, it's a very high-level decision. Typically, one, it's more than just an annexation agreement, but to actually bring an area like this into the urban growth boundary would have required a major plan amendment. Council during the discussion that Erin had brought up a few years ago, decided that this exchange of providing a meter in exchange for the annexate, for the easement required for the water line was an acceptable way to explore this, but serving the entire area is a very different decision as well, and one that may bring the regional plan back into the conversation. So I just wanted to bring that up as kind of more of the policy context that may be needed for that option.
Erin, closing, if I can. So, so just trying to think through the lens of the residents that are trying to work with us, can, can you just reiterate the process that they should be considering if they wanted to pursue this?
Councilmember Shimonie, members of the council, I think that's special district process. And so whether it's, Sterling had noted, the special water district is part of Arizona revised statutes. The Coconino County also has a special district process, and maybe there's an avenue to explore there as well. I think there's been some initial conversations, at least with our real estate folks, Bryce Doty and Sarah as well. And so I think if, you know, if they're willing to go down that path, to answer your question from before, I think we the city, at least staff, are in a place where we could say we would be willing to go down that path as well. But from that individual property owner provision of, of water provision, that becomes much more difficult for us for the reasons that Sarah had explained, and then that fair and equitable distribution as well, that becomes very difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
A couple of questions. The first one is, where do they get their water now, the people that live on this area? Do they each have their own pump or what?
Councilmember McCarthy...
Own the well, I mean.
You know, the property owners could probably answer that better than I, but just, you know, having some experience with many of those county developments, some have wells, and it's very costly to dig a well in this community, and oftentimes I've, I've heard...
Sorry to interrupt, city attorneys.
Yes.
Wanting to comment here.
A well, do they haul water? To answer that quickly.
Yeah, and thanks, Andy. I wanted to let you finish, sir. I appreciate it, Mayor. I really didn't want to interrupt, other than to just follow up on what Andy had mentioned before. The water district that I was referring to would be something that individuals would work as a group with the county to form. Districts are formed through the county, and that, again, there, there would be a process for that. But what's before you tonight could still move forward, be put in the ground, and then they, the, the district essentially could negotiate with the city to tap into it later. I just want to make sure that's clear for everyone.
Thank you, Sterling. Councilmember McCarthy?
So I think we all know there's a lot of legal technicalities involved in this. It's more complicated than what we see on the surface. So my first question is, based on the ideas we heard from the gentleman that was on the, you know, virtually made comments tonight and read that letter, does that change any of the recommendations of either our legal department or our water staff?
Not from a legal perspective, no.
And from the water perspective?
No, I, I can't deviate from a legal department. And, and in terms of water law and water policy, you all know, very complicated issues throughout the state of Arizona and, and the West. That said, you know, things can proceed in terms of us, we the city, working to acquire the right of way, and I think what you're hearing from us and from our legal folks is that if the community is willing to work from that district's perspective, we would be willing to do that as well.
All right, so just to clarify, your recommendation, the staff recommendation as presented in the packet and on the agenda still stands?
Yes.
And then my last question is, and I think I heard the answer to this, but I just want to be clear, we could take staff's recommendation as presented on the agenda tonight, and even if we did that, there would be opportunity for further discussions on some of these creative ways to help out these homeowners?
Yes.
Okay, so that's interesting.
Our water policy allows anyone to approach the water commission and staff with a request for out of, out of city service.
Okay, and that could be considered in a slightly different way than what we've been talking about. There's some room for creativity and negotiations and et cetera.
Correct. The issue we ran into here is if we offer to one, especially in an HOA, we're essentially creating a, a district, so to speak, where you want a, a distribution system. Otherwise, it is, as we're looking at it, more like a wildcat type issue, where we don't have control, and Sarah did such a great job articulating those concerns.
All right, so we could formalize the staff recommendation tonight, but then there would be room for possible other approaches or negotiations in the future. So if we pass this per the staff's recommendation, we're not killing this discussion at all.
That's correct. And councilmember McCarthy and Erin hit on a, a key point, a distribution system, and so wildcatting is something that's just difficult from many levels with several stub outs off of a main line. Distribution systems in general are so much more desirable from a systemic standpoint in us providing water services to, you know, 70,000, 70,000 residents in our community.
So it sounds like my recommendation is we approve the action suggested by staff and the water commission, but that the city be open-minded about further discussions if there's any practical way to address this in the future.
Thank you, councilmember McCarthy. Others? Well, I guess I have a question. So the special districting, how long of a process does that take? Yeah, I know.
I can, I can actually comment on that, if that's all right.
Yeah.
It does depend. It, it does take time to set up a district, and it's not something that we do. This would be something that these individuals would work as a group through the county, and again, there's a process for that. But I, I want to, just back to what councilmember McCarthy was saying, I want to clarify that the direction that staff is seeking tonight, if you formalize that and approve that, council, it is to move forward with obtaining the property rights. That includes negotiations with the property owners, and it also includes condemnation. And if that happens and the line goes in and they get a district set up later, you bet the door is still open if, if that happens for them to, to tap into the line later on. But it would not be part of the project and the installation of the line now. I want that clarified. I think that's important for everyone to understand.
And this wouldn't be done, the phase four won't be breaking ground and being done until 2024, is that correct, Trevor?
I will say on your question, Mayor, it is helpful if all the people all agree, right? And we all know, just in the work that we all do, that can be quite difficult, but with any district formation process, it's super helpful if a majority of the property owners... But with any district formation process, it's super helpful if a majority of the property owners are on board, so to speak.
Yes, your honor, we were looking at 2023 for Phase Four.
Okay, 2023 for Phase Four. So that does give a little bit of time to organize to that front, but as stated, we're, would still be able to do that after the fact as well. All right, any other questions, council?
So I move that the city council formalize the recommendation as presented in the packet and on the agenda tonight. I can read the whole thing if necessary.
I think that would be helpful for the record, councilmember McCarthy. Thank you. It's under the staff recommended action.
All right, I'll put my glasses on. So I move that city council accept the Water Commission's recommendation not to deviate from policy, not to offer water services in exchange for property rights and to move forward with purchase of property rights for water line easements outside the city limits along the Switzer Canyon Water Main Transmission Project that would include Phase Four and Five.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, with that, we're going to take a short breather and then get back to it. Let's make this a little shorter, 7:25, eight minutes. Does that give a good enough? All right, 7:25, we'll be back. Scoop for, get all the way in your seat? All right, now we're ready. McCarthy's ready. So we're down to Agenda Item 11G, or 13G, which is an ordinance of the city council, the city flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations, Chapter Three Through Ten, Three Ten, user fees to establish airport parking fees and amending Title Eight Public Ways and Property, Chapter Eight Dash O Six Airport Rules and Regulations, Section Zero Zero One Dash Eight Dash Zero Six Dash Zero Zero One Dash Zero 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 Six Point Three, to provide for enforcement of airport parking and exemptions from parking fees, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Barney, take us away.
Yes, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having myself and the management services city treasurer, Rick Tatter, here tonight. I was just saying, this has been a fascinating council tonight and, you know, we're talking about water issues. We're talking about the new civic center downtown and community involvement. So now we're kind of winding down to the less exciting stuff. This will be the first reading tonight for the Flagstaff Pulliam Airport Paid Rates, Paid Parking Rates Ordinance. And we'll be coming back December 28th for the second read for that. Some of this you're going to find is repetitive, but we wanted to make sure since we had put this on the docket before last week's council and not all people may have seen that, so you're going to see some repetition here. The existing lot, which is the terminal lot consisting of 385 spaces, will be renovated. Did I go too far forward? No, okay. And will be paid parking entry and exit gate arms system. The new lot, which you see up in the upper right of this diagram, is referred to as the economy lot, will have 413 new spaces, internal walkways with a headlight wall, eight-foot wide sidewalk to the terminal, and there'll be artwork put into that, which you will see presentation next week, two entry and exit lane locations with gate arms. The benefits of this, the new lot will increase existing inventory, provide for bus use, feature expansion of the electric vehicle charging and bicycle paths, which the, when you see, when you come out there, the bus exit is already being built in place. There will be revenues. The revenues from the paid parking will pay for the construction costs and will help us with the ongoing operational and maintenance needs and hopefully make us a more sustainable and self-reliant facility. We've done presentations to the Airport Commission with recommended rates, the Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce Advisory Council, the Tourism Commission, and this Thursday night after the budget retreat, we'll be presenting to the Sustainability Commission. And a later date, we will be presenting to the Transportation Commission. We also thought we'd add some of the public comments that we had received on Facebook. I did see there was a couple more in today, but we haven't brought those into this. These are from past comments. What will the cost of those who park along the islands, not in the marked spots? Is that a premium? Parking must be marked in, or put in marked spots and the parking outside of those parking lots will be subject to parking enforcement from Flagstaff. My escapes my mind here all of a sudden. Park flag, thank you, yes. Another question is, when will enforcement begin? We will finish up the overall construction of the lot and once we get further along, we will notify the public the start gates. We will not do formal enforcement until after we've got the paid parking system in place and we've put notices out for approximately 30 days or more. Will there be more parking in the future after these rates are in place? Yes, we are adding additional 413 spots and a possibility of maybe increasing a little bit in the existing lot when we're doing the remodeling. When will this new lot open? We are aiming for a SOP opening with no paid parking element by February 1st. If we get the amenities such as the parking lights and the gate arms and can meet that date, we will do it at that date. But I'm not sure that we can. We're having delivering issues like everybody else is. Wait, so we have to pay for parking now? No, for now, we are in construction phase and still completing several processes. We will be in front of council on 12/7 for the first read, which is actually, that was not the first read last week. This, oh, he is 12/7. Woo, excuse me, my brain's a little tired this evening. Then we'll have a second read on 12/28 and will not start charge parking until after that. And then there will be paid parking to cover for our costs, as we'd mentioned earlier. Costs, the new lot and the upgrades to the existing lot is approximately $4.9 million. Parking staff for park flag will be $80,000, that's one and a half employees, so that we have seven-day-a-week coverage. There'll be an increase to utilities of approximately $10,000. Landscape maintenance, about $21,000. Snow management for $19,000. Hardware and software costs of approximately $48,000 annually and a credit card fee of approximately $90,000 a year. And then we will be putting money aside for a few years for maintenance of about $20,000 and that total is $288,000. Now I'm going to turn it over to Rick Tatter.
Very good. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. We're going to re-present this information as it was just during the work session as first read. When we put our financial plan together, we had four objectives we wanted to meet when we build these rates for the airport parking program. First and foremost is recovery of the capital investment, that 4.5, $4.9 million we're putting into expanded parking and improvements out at the airport. Future capital investments will need additional repairs to the existing parking lot as well as the rental car agency area. We would like to do some repairs and upgrades to those areas. We want to cover the operation expenses, which Barney mentioned on the previous slide, as well as make the airport fund a true enterprise fund where it's not relying on other resources outside their capacity and the fees and charges that they have at the airport. Currently, they do rely on, on the airport fund or on the general fund. So this is a demonstration on a balanced plan that is, that was provided in the analysis that was posted on the 60-day notice. The upper portion talks about the resources, the revenues that we anticipate from the rates we're proposing. And the lower part is, is those four objectives we want to cover, the uses of funds. The capital investment recovery, we're looking at a 15-year recovery of that $4.9 million, that's $330,000 a year. Our operation costs, as mentioned on the previous slide, a little bit this year and then $288,000 growing after next fiscal year. Capital improvements, talked about those additional parking improvements we want to get done. And the airport operations, that last line is where the reliance on the general fund currently stands. About $150,000 starting in fiscal year '25 and going up to $450,000 in the out-years. Fortunately, we have the American Rescue Plan Act now and they're not relying on the general fund, but we do see a future reliance that we want to address. This is how, the fee schedule that we developed as a team. This was done through a multiple facet of outreach, including comparison with other airports, similar sizes and Phoenix airports and such. We had discussions with the airport director on what these rates should be. We discussed these with the Airport Commission and they gave approval for the rates that we were bringing forward. As well as we have an internal airport team that meets frequently and talks about lots of airport development. And we've talked through what, what maybe a good rate schedule should be at our Flagstaff airport. So I'm just going to go through this real quickly. The staff proposed rates, you'll see it broken down by different segments. The second column is the first effective date. Correction here will be actually January 28th because the second read has been moved back. So this slides a little bit off. And then we'll have a rate increase July 1, 2022. So we're proposing the first hour is free for customers visiting our airport terminals. Give them time to drop off people, collect people and just a short time free. After the first hour, it'll be $2 per hour. If they need to stay a full day, we're looking at a max of $7 per day for the terminal lot. And that's the one closest to the airport, the current existing lot. The economy lot's a little further, so we're going to do $5 per day. Then we factor in some weekly rates for our customers too, which is basically a one-day free off the rates of a daily rate. So that's what we proposed and it definitely provides a balanced financial plan and delivers those four objectives that we've had. And with that, today is your first read of this ordinance. We're looking for that from you and then we'll be back on December 2nd for the first read and adoption. And that's all we have for today.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any questions? I move to read Ordinance Number 2021 Dash Twenty Three by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Seconded by councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. City clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations, Chapter Three Dash Ten User Fees to Establish Airport Parking Fees and Amending Title Eight Public Ways and Property, Chapter Eight Dash Zero Six Airport Rules and Regulations, Section Zero Zero One Dash Eight Dash Zero Six Dash Zero Zero One Dash Zero 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 Six Point Three, to Provide for Enforcement of Airport Parking and Exemptions from Parking Fees, Providing for Penalties, Repeal of Conflicting Ordnances, Severability, Providing for Clerical Corrections, and Establishing an Effective Date.
Thank you. We're down to Agenda Item 13H, Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2021 Dash Twenty Four, An Ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council Authorizing the Acquisition of Drainage Easements, Temporary Construction Easements and Any Other Necessary Property Rights for Drainage and Flood Control Improvement to the Spruce Avenue Wash, Providing for Delegation of Authority, Subsequent Council Approvals, Severability, Authority for Clerical Corrections, and Declared Emergency. Oh, you're on, on mute, Mr. Doty.
Good evening, mayor and council. Can you hear me? I trust you can.
Yes, sir.
All right, last item. Back on November 23rd, the museum fire mitigation plans were brought before you. And one of the projects mentioned during that was the Cedar to Dorothy Spruce Avenue Wash Capital Project. And so tonight I am bringing before you the first and second read for an ordinance authorizing property acquisition for this capital project. Did my... Trying to find, is there a presentation in front of you?
There is not.
That is shared. Here we go.
Just came up. And then it ran away.
Bryce, if you're using two screens, there you go.
Voila.
Okay.
Now it's up, Bryce.
All right, thank you so much. All right, here's where we're at in the, in the vicinity. So the Spruce Avenue Wash is this one that comes down. We've been speaking about it many times during council. Adjacent to Paradise, to Paradise Lane and down through Grandview and meets up on the north side, right here is Cedar Avenue. And so on the northwest corner, right here, is the Cedar Safeway Parking Lot. And then on the south, right here, is Dorthe Avenue. And in between Main, Main Streets and Rose Street, there's the Cedar Avenue Wash. And right here is just the aerial of it outlined. And the capital project right now is planned to convert this, this wash, not necessarily convert it, but to improve it with an open channel to increase the, the amount of flow on this. Right now, there are no recorded drainage easements on this wash. And so for, for this capital project to continue, we need the authorization to, to purchase and to acquire these rights from the property owners. There, right now, we're still in the design phase, so we don't have particular legal descriptions for each affected owner, but there are no impacts to structures based off of this project. And we are affecting approximately 22 parcels and 15 owners. This is just the, the brief current design model. So this is the open channel that'll, that will come from the top of Cedar down until it empties out into a box culvert going underneath Dorthe Avenue. And really, that's, that's the extent of this project we're bringing into you as a first and second read because we need to start the property acquisition process on this capital project if we're going to deliver this construction project in time for the monsoons for next season. So with, if this ordinance passes today, we will begin contacting property owners and start that property acquisition process, which is, involves getting appraisals, sending out offers based off of those appraisals and, and either closing those transactions or going through the condemnation process to receive possession in order to construct. And that's all I've got. If there are any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. I'd like to read Ordinance Number 2021 Dash Twenty Four by title only for the first time. I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, I'm absolutely supportive of this and I want to thank staff for expediting this whole process. And I encourage staff to expedite other projects that will also be required to address the flooding. I mean, this is a good example of what we can do. We need to do more of it. Thank you, Mr. Clifton and all of your staff for pushing this. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of drainage easements, temporary construction easements and any other necessary property rights for drainage and flood control improvements to the Spruce Avenue Wash, providing for delegation of authority, subsequent council approvals, severability, authority, authority for clerical corrections and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move to read Ordinance Number 2021 Dash Twenty Four by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Seconded by councilmember Sweet. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion is, or that motion is unanimously approved. City clerk.
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of drainage easements, temporary construction easements and any other necessary property rights for drainage and flood control improvements easements, temporary construction easements, and any other necessary property rights for drainage and flood control improvements to the Spruce Avenue Wash, providing for delegation of authority, subsequent council approvals, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-24.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion?
Real fast, a quick question, and I think I know the answer, but just want to throw it out for the public. A unanimous vote is required on this for it to pass, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, Ms. Philbert?
Well, she's coming to the microphone. I'd like to thank council for your thorough and expedient consideration of this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I apologize, but I made an error in the staff summary for the Tourism Commission. We appointed one too many commissioners and one for the wrong term. We suggest council does a motion to reconsider all appointments to the Tourism Commission and make three appointments to terms ending in January 2025. It will be the same order of Councilmember Shimoney, Councilmember Aslan, and Vice Mayor Daggett for the reappointments, and Stacy Salzberg, Stacy Number One, and Sterling Solomon are available for any questions. Thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you. I move to reconsider, how do I put this, reconsider the appointments for the Tourism Commission as listed on Agenda Item 9B. Did I do that right? Okay, good.
And yes, just for everyone's understanding, these are all of the appointments, and Mayor, you voted in favor of all of the appointments that were made in order for you, in order for that reconsideration, or your motion for reconsideration to be valid, it had to be somebody that voted in favor of all. Did you? Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a second? Do we reopen?
I will second, but I have something to say before we vote.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
I just wanted to say, I think what this means is that we're going to lose one of the appointments that we made this evening, and that's very unfortunate to have to do that. Mistakes happen, and we'll roll with it, and I just want to make sure that anybody who gets left out stays as part of the applicant pool for the next time around. These appointments come up fairly often, so hopefully this unfortunate little effect of the process won't be too discouraging to anybody who's trying to volunteer for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for stating that, Councilmember. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we are going to be making three appointments into terms expiring January 2025, starting with Councilmember Shimoney.
Gosh, I'm having déjà vu. And I'd like to also echo Councilmember Aslan's comments. This is a very difficult discussion to be rehashing, and just, I just feel for whoever it is that's not going to be reappointed or appointed in this process, but with that, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Jonathan Stone to a position expiring January 2025.
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Shimoney. My brain's getting a little dead here, sorry. Councilmember Shimoney, seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, I mean.
That motion carries 5-2. Councilmember Aslan.
Okay, so all these appointments are for 2025 now? I think I'm going to go ahead and change my recommendation. I was very enthusiastic to make my previous recommendation for a new applicant, but it was done as a calculated, I was, I was hoping that one of the other appointments was going to be Teri Bedecksa, and I want to guarantee that she remains on the Tourism Commission because I think she plays an important role, and she brings a lot of good experience to the role that she has been playing. And so my recommendation will be for her to serve on the Tourism Commission for another term into 2025. And I want to personally tell George, I really hope you'll stay in the mix and apply again, and we'll, I'm not in control of the process, but you can't play if you don't win, and I hope you're able to, you can't win if you don't play, sorry.
I'll second the motion.
And yeah, I'll leave it there.
All right, I have it seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, and Vice Mayor?
I move that we reappoint Jennifer Rowley to a term on the Tourism Commission expiring January 2025.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, and again, I apologize for my error.
All worries, it happens. Okay, with that, we are down to general public, any general public participation today? All right, then, we are to Agenda Item 15, Information Items Two from Mayor, Council, and Staff, and Future Agenda Item Requests. I'll start over here with Councilmember Aslan.
That's easy, nothing for tonight.
I've never heard Shimoney say that, so...
I thought you were going to help me buy a couple more seconds of time, but I'm going to go ahead and just share a couple of quick things. I hosted a really fun bicycle planning history discussion last week on Facebook and on YouTube, and Martin Ince with the city, along with Matt White, a former council member back in the 80s, 90s, along with Susan, who's our Bicycle Advisory Committee Chair, and Sam Meyer from NAU, and David Wessel, we're all part of the panel discussion, and as planned, the hour-long conversation lasted two hours, and it was a great conversation, and it was fun going down memory lane about the history of bicycle planning and learning about all these great planning documents that never really got implemented. And so, wanted to just share that that was a great discussion, and it was also inspiring and frustrating at the same time. This past Sunday, I hosted a bicycle ride through our pilots with about 13 individuals who turned out, and Mayor, thank you for joining us towards the end of that ride and being there for the discussion and being able to hear what the public has to say, but the general feedback was very positive. There were comments that it was too thin, and that they felt, individuals felt like if they had a swerve or anything like that, they were going to crash either to their left or to the right, and so somewhat dangerous for cyclists, and that goes in line with what I've heard from Eugene and Portland staff, that bike lanes need to be at least eight to 10 feet at minimum. So five and a half feet is just not going to cut it, but that's why we're doing a pilot. But it was a great ride and a good turnout, and I was really glad about that. And that, I just want to end with saying that this Thursday, we have a full-day budget retreat, and so going back to the bicycle planning history comes down to the money and allocation of money. So little sneak preview, I'm going to be pushing that we prioritize bicycle infrastructure above and beyond the Prop 419 money that we have, so that we can actually be successful. Anyways, good, long meeting today, council, staff, leadership. Thank you all so much. We covered a lot of ground, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Nothing for me tonight. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing for me tonight, except the following. I attended the Moms Request Action Meeting, which was held over at the Sawmill Facility, the Police Department, and we had a very good discussion about how people can help the Police Department, the Police Academy, and et cetera. So that was an interesting meeting. On the weekend, I attended the All-Aboard Arizona Meeting down in Tucson, which was an all-day conference to talk about Amtrak issues, you know, protecting our route through Flagstaff, trying to get daily service down through the Tucson, the southern route, and the possibility of maybe a route from Tucson to Phoenix. And the other thing I'd like to ask the City Manager is if we could consider opening up the downtown library on Saturdays. There's a lot of people that can't make it during the week, and the library provides a very important service to the community, so I'm just wondering if staff could look at the possibility of providing library service on Saturdays at the downtown location. So...
We will look at it.
Well, thank you, City Manager. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to meet one-on-one with President Jose Ruiz Cruz Rivera yesterday, and spoke to the possibilities of pursuing synergy and partnership at NAU in terms of four-first development, economic development, transportation, resiliency, and climate adaptation. I also want to pause and provide a space, as we remember Pearl Harbor today, I also want to remember that 10 hours after the Pearl Harbor attack, the Japanese Imperial Army attacked the Philippines and occupied the Philippines for three years, killing over 100 Filipinos and raping hundreds of women, especially in my home province, Pampanga. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. City Manager, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, again, thank you for all the thoughtful discussion, and back to the retreat on Thursday. It will be a pretty high-level retreat, and I know there's a desire to get into some things. I don't want you to be disappointed if we keep it high level. Those topics are coming, I assure you, so thank you.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned.